...and Environment Committee. District Nine Councilmember Jan Perry has a dialogue with the new interim General Manager of the Department of Water and Power, S. David Freeman.
The item before us today is about shortage year water rates, and there are several proposed water rate actions, including a low-income lifeline subsidy, fifteen percent increase, medical use allocation for special medical equipment use, council review increase from fifteen days to thirty days, technical adjustment for Tier Two rates, and the horse allocation subsidy. Now, the department has asked that this item be sent back to them for further review, and I think, given that this is a bad economy and with new management, this is a very prudent request, because my concern is essentially what this amounts to, is a rate increase. I want Mr. Freeman just to give us a little bit of information about the balance of labor costs juxtaposed with operations and maintenance costs, because I have a few recommendations I'd like to share with him to make a better assessment of this proposal, so he can give us a minute, just maybe a few seconds, talking about labor costs and whether or not they've affected your operations and maintenance costs.
They're about-
Stop my time?
They're about seventy-five percent of our O and M costs, labor costs, are, though they dramatically affect our total costs.
And as you move forward, I would expect you're going to develop some strategies in-house to make some adjustments to reduce your operational costs, is that something you're thinking about?
More than thinking about it, if my good friend, Councilman Smith, will forgive me, I am the inspector general and the ratepayer advocate put together.
Oh, okay.
I intend to go over the budget like it hadn't been gone over in a long, long time, because my customers are all hurting, and I cannot come before Ms. Perry, or you, or anyone else, and ask for a rate increase for either electricity or water until we have gone over the budget and cut it to the bone, and that is an exercise I started yesterday afternoon, and we will persist, and so I had the misfortune of being at the table the last time we got guidance from you, and I heard what you said, so we're into cutting costs and coming back to this council with something that I can look you in the eye and say, "We really need it."
Talking about the recent second-tier rate increase, District Twelve Councilmember Greg Smith does not believe the current citywide water conservation program was particularly well thought out.
What we're talking about here today is, first of all, the basic request I have is to look at some other things that we needed to think about when we passed the Tier Two rate increase proposal during the summer that hadn't been thought out, and I think we were kind of in a rushed judgment, and you mentioned that, you know, you are the advocate, and we've got a motion coming in. I totally trust you, you know our relationship, I have great respect for you and great trust for you, but you, like me, won't be here forever, and there's been general manager of that department-
Think for yourself, sir.
Yeah, you may be, you may be. I wouldn't be surprised, but the point is that there have been general managers in the past that I have not agreed with, I don't think were good managers of that department, have not helped the department. The difference is, today we're in a different world.
You're correct.
And that began a decade ago, in 2004, when Mr. Cardenas I brought forward a plan that says, "Before you do a rate increase, you're going to do that Uron-type study, you're going to go to the public with it, and it's going to be a very open process." Water and Power's been a little resilient against change, and I think we need an agent of change, I know you will be that agent of change, we need that ongoing process, so that discussion will take place in this Perry's committee, we need to really open up Water and Power, like we're opening up this building, to public input and to public ideas, and that can only be good for all of us, so I'm glad you're over there, I'm glad you're going to help us reel some of these issues in. Going back to my original motion again, it was on horses and big animals, which kind of started the snowball effect of discussions, but that was what it was all about. We need to be very thoughtful how we go forward on these things and not rush to judgment, and I think we rushed to judgment on how we do the water conservation program, it wasn't particularly well thought out, I have other motions in on three-day watering rather than two, most cities are doing three days, not two, those are the kind of discussions I don't think we did very good job of last summer, and I think we need as a go-forward basis to do that, and all of that has encompassed now into this bigger snowball that's going through the committee again, but those are the discussions we want to have, and David, I'm very happy you're there. And just to make it legal for the city attorney, on my time, there's something about your expenditure, some money for a contract, would you explain that to me in all my time?
Actually, that is outside of the subject matter description.
Not really?
I believe it is.
Okay, I try, David. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
District One Councilmember Ed Reyes thanks Mr. Freeman for his service to the city. Mr. Freeman is a former DWP General Manager, was president of the Los Angeles Harbor Commission, and until his appointment as interim General Manager of the Department of Water and Power, he was deputy mayor assigned to environmental issues. Councilmember Reyes offers an amendment that would protect low-income users.
If we're going to send this back as part of examination of the Tier One structure, we make sure that there are protections in place for those who are consuming the least. This is not only to protect the lower-income users, who tend to use less, and that's the majority in my district, being that they are at poverty level, family of four, surviving on twenty-one thousand dollars a year, but also to incentivize conservation to the greatest extent possible. So we have ratepayers that are doing their due diligence, but I want to make sure we have protections for them, and that we create incentives, and that's something we can include in the discussion, I would truly appreciate that as a friendly amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I really need the help of council members to help me educate people who come to this country from places where the water is not clean, and who can't really afford it, but go out and buy water for a dollar and a half or more in the grocery store when our water is clean enough, and I need some new ideas how to get low-income people to understand that the water coming out of the faucet is clean and to use it, because my information is that there's a lot of people that, because we haven't succeeded in educating them, are spending money that they hardly don't have on water when we're selling it for two gallons for a penny, and if you have some ideas that help me tackle that problem, I'd really appreciate it.
And I would be more than happy to support you in that effort, I know I have one of the most diverse districts, and I think the neighborhoods all around downtown have a strong presence of diversity, but I also know we have challenges in that the water might be clean, but when they enter the private property, enter those apartments, the plumbing in those apartments are still dating back to the twenties and thirties, and it comes out of the faucet.
So are mine.
Yeah, so that's something we can work on and facilitate, and I look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Questioning Mr. Freeman about the length of time he plans to stay on as interim General Manager, District Eleven Councilmember Bill Rosendahl comments on the selection of a new GM, and says the ratepayers must be considered every step of the way.
Six months you're going to do this, is that what you said?
Hopefully, we'll find a professional General Manager, the council will approve sooner than that, but that's the limit.
I see, okay.
And I am not Dick Cheney, I'm not going to pick myself, I'm not a candidate for that job.
Okay, but you're going to help in the selection and recruitment, and you're going to get a professional, somebody with a sharp pencil who understands numbers, somebody knows how to manage people, and also understands the issues, right?
Yes, sir, but the mayor will select the person, but we will recruit a few, and then the council will either approve or disapprove, there's a process, but we intend to have an open process, we want to involve the community in the selection process, and we want to find somebody younger that can be the kind of manager you describe, and stay with it for fifteen or twenty years, hopefully.
Very good, well, I look forward to that kind of recruitment, because you are a living legend, you know, you've made a big difference in your home life-
My own mind, yeah.
-throughout the nation. There are three things that I want to make sure we always look at, I'm big into solar, my Mar Vista people are putting it on their roof, I'm about to-
Excuse me, Mr. Rosendahl, this should be a discussion of the water rates?
Oh, it's water rates, huh? Well, you know we said that, we've got to deal with solar, okay? We also have to deal with a ratepayer group of community people that have a deep interest in this, and they need to be considered every step of the way, be it the water rates or anything else, they sometimes feel they're used for a purpose and then pushed aside, but they've got to be brought into the process on that.
Yes, sir, I think they have screamed their way into the process, and we will love them, whether they scream or whether they talk softly, and we will involve them, but there is in this city now a tiny screaming minority, and we need to also keep our ear to the ground and listen to the silent majority that just pay their bills and love the DWP.
Yeah, and you know, the last point is, you saw in the news this morning where pipes are bursting again, and water in my Venice is all over the streets, and the puddles are getting beyond belief and all that, obviously, the infrastructure, whoever we bring in has got to understand how to repair the infrastructure and move in the right-
We will be doubling the pace of replacement, as we, over the next year, as we speak, we already have in a major expansion of that in the works, we've got to replace the old pipe faster than we have, and try to find the money to do it without burdening the ratepayer too much, it's a challenge.
The last thing about the water is, without water coming in, we couldn't survive here, the Delta issues up north have to be focused on, the Colorado River, and the farmers and their use of water, so that we in Southern California can be appreciated with our needs.
It's an important issue, as a matter of fact, we need to be much stronger in saying to the farmers, if we're going to be rationing water in Los Angeles, they need to at least meter the damn water that comes onto the farms, because that's where seventy percent of the water is, and the mayor was speaking out on that the other day, and I hope the members of the council join him, we need to speak up for the urban user of water, who is really not getting a fair shake out of the water deal that's being put together in Sacramento, in my opinion, we, the, the water is going for crops that are very much subsidized, at rates that are very low, we are rationing water in Los Angeles, they ought to be at least metering the water going on the farms.
Mr. Freeman, thank you for your appearance, I understand the direction is to send us back to the department for more review.
And along with Mr. Reyes's amendment-
Very well, that'll be the directive, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So the request to make water rate adjustments will go back to the Department of Water and Power for further review, and return to council within thirty days. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial two-one-three-six-two-one-CITY. In West LA, dial three-one-oh-four-seven-one-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial three-one-oh-five-four-seven-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial eight-one-eight-nine-zero-four-nine-four-five-oh. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear, and we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at six-thirty-eight South Beacon Street, room seven-hundred in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October sixteenth, two thousand nine. On behalf of Wendell Ayala and everyone here at Channel Thirty-Five, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Bulky item pickup? Call three-one-one, the toll-free number for non-emergency services, three-one-one, your one call to City Hall. Graffiti removal? Call three-one-one, the toll-free number for non-emergency services, three-one-one, your one call to City Hall.
Great change begins with small choices.
One decision to help finds another.
Doing whatever you can, however big or small.
One simple decision.
One.
One.
That's one, that's how great change begins.
Tune in October nineteenth through twenty-fifth to see how your favorite TV shows participate.
L.A. City View, Channel Thirty-Five, your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles. Welcome to City Hall. Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. This is Tuesday, October 20th. Council meets three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. All meetings are open to the public. For those of you who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website, www.lacity.org, or at council phone, 213-621-CITY. We thank our members for being here this morning, and we are going to call the meeting to order. This meeting is now in session. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon Cardenas, Han, Wiza, Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weston Zine-Garcetti, 11 members present, and Aquormis President.
Very well. First item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Reyes moves. Councilmember Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Labonge moves. Councilmember Han seconds.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
Mr. Reyes, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? All, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Thank you, Council President. It's my honor. Please stand. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, you wish to go through the agenda?
Yes.
Let's go through the agenda.
First items on the agenda, items 1 through 5 are street lighting district ordinances noted for public hearing. Council should have 12 members. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Please hold those till we get to 12.
Items 6 through 11 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to continue items 10 and 11 to Friday.
Without opposition, continue those to October 23rd.
And, Mr. President, I understand there's an amendment that works on item 6. Do you wish to hold that?
Hold number 6, then. On the remaining items, no cards. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Very well.
Items 12 through 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Number 12 is an ordinance. You want to hold that?
And there are also cards on that.
All right, so we'll hold 12 of the remaining items.
Mr. President, there are cards on items 15 and 17.
We will hold those that have cards. Any specials, colleagues? No specials being noted.
I believe Mr. Labonge wished to call item 18 special.
It's Brian. Congratulations on Sunday.
What happened to Mr... Oh, football scorer. Thank you. Thought it was something important. Remaining items, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items 20 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and items 20 through 23 are ordinance as well.
Very well.
And there is a card on 24.
Hold that. Mr. Corretts.
I'd like to call item 23 special.
23 special, Mr. Corretts. Any other items special, colleagues? On the remaining items, open the roll.
All the items have been called special, Mr. President.
Oh, they have been. Well, then, we're not going to open the roll. Next item, please.
That would take care of the items called special. Do you wish to go to public comment?
Let's do public comment now, and we have our first public comment. Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning, Doctor. And if we can have some quiet in the chambers, a lot of side conversation. Sergeant Orange, please. Very nice. Thank you. Dr. Williams, you're up.
Okay. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA, for those that don't know where that is. Yesterday, the Board of Public Works approved a shell game. In April of this year, the board approved the overall plan for stormwater urban waste — stormwater management, and the city council rejected it and sent it back. Now, we've waited six months for them to submit something just for Biona Creek. It's due to the Regional Water Quality Control Board next week. So, why did they wait so long? They did not provide meaningful documents on the websites or available to the public. There's no provision for where the money is going to come from. Only $700 million plus $20 to $45 million a year of operations and maintenance. So, when it does come, if it does come, I would recommend that you reject it out of hand because there's been no public outreach. A lot of the documents within the available documents are contradictory or in error. Thank you.
Thank you, William, Dr. Williams. To the San Fernando Valley, Sean Murphy in the San Fernando Valley. And then Donna Purman in the San Fernando Valley, Lorda, San Fernando Valley, City Hall. Mr. Murphy, go ahead. Mr. Murphy.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council. You're doing a wonderful job running this meeting. I heard on the news this morning, our water main breaks are still breaking. It's on — the water main break started at Mulholland Drive near Coldwater Canyon. I hope the DWP can look into that. Also, we'll talk about the election coming up in eight weeks from today, CD2. Paul Kukorian is going to win CD2. I'd like all the neighborhood councils to please vote for Paul Kukorian. He's going to do good in CD2. Paul, I'm — the reason I'm bringing him up because he's the best man for this — to run CD2. So, I wasn't here last week due to the rainy weather. MTA should — thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate your nice comments this morning. Donna Purman, Donna in the San Fernando Valley.
Yeah, thank you. Vote for Paul Kukorian, not Essel. Anyway, Marion Fogler can't be here today. She's in mourning for a beautiful and loving cat of 21, 20 years — 22 years named Mindy Fogler, who went to God today. So, I want to adjourn today in memory of Mindy Fogler, who's Marion Fogler's cat, who showed great courage and love and will be loved and remembered always. Even though the treatment didn't work, the vet bills still need to be paid. It's hard for the low and middle-class workers with pets, especially Marion Fogler, to pay the huge vet bills, especially now when the mayor wants his city employees to make less, even though everything else is going up. I wish there was something that would help the middle-class, who love their animals and will do anything to help them. I wish there was a fund for them instead of giving all our money to the redevelopers and the CRA. Our shelters are having problems. We need to be pet-friendly and animal-lover-friendly. I would love to see a memory of Mindy Fogler Fund. It's wrong when the city council misuses our money in the millions and ask our hard-working city employees, even sworn personnel, to sacrifice. No furloughs for city council — no, there's no furloughs for the city council members, though. There is for their staff, but I don't see the city council members having to do for themselves. And politicians, like our mayor and our city attorney. It's not right. I say we don't have any concessions for this — to this bill. I think the city employees should stand up. As long as the city council misuses our money, and even though it's a little bit less on the fee waivers at this moment, they'll probably go back up. When we throw all our money over to the CRA and huge projects, then — and the people who really need the money are not getting it. And even domestic shelters, they're being closed down. I see that. And these women need to go, and sometimes men need to go there, so to keep themselves safe and their children and their pets. So, no concessions. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Darian in the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Darian, San Fernando Valley.
Council, for almost five years now, I've come before the Los Angeles City Council and the people of Los Angeles to explain that the government, on many fronts, has been a fraud in covering up public contracting. The issues are enormous, widespread, complex. Last week, I explained that my case is before the United States Supreme Court to ask if they'll hear the case. But over the weekend, I was watching the History Channel, and I saw some new footage that I had never seen before in the interviews of the Dallas Police Department after supposedly Lee Harvey Oswald had shot our president. The issue was, was there anybody else involved? Was — the question was brought before the chief of police of Dallas. He quickly said, "No, we have our man. There is nobody else." There may be somebody who know — might know of the state of mind of Lee Harvey Oswald. There is no one else. This was within six hours after it happened. Not only did Lee Harvey Oswald — the issue is whether he had an accomplice. The issue is whether Lee Harvey Oswald was there at all. That was a complete fabrication by the government. It is a complete fabrication over the complex contracting that took 10 years at Malibu Pier. Is it a county contract, state contract, city contract? The issue is it is a widespread cover-up of the government. And I've come before the council. I've come before the people of Los Angeles for years over this issue. It's before the United States Supreme Court if they'll hear the case. I hope that people will weigh in here. We have a fraudulent government here. There is no transparency. It is a complete sham, and where we sit today economically is a result of our resources being fleeced by — of the people of Los Angeles, State of California, and the United States government.
Thank you. Richard Kearns here back at City Hall. Richard Kearns.
Good morning, Acting President Zine, distinguished city council members. My name is Richard Kearns. I am a 58-year-old gay man living with AIDS in Los Angeles for more than 20 years, an AIDS activist, and poet, and journalist. I'm here today to remind you, if you needed any reminding, that the future is never what it used to be, particularly when it comes to medical cannabis and persons with AIDS. Your voice, my lips, our bursting breath, one war, one great chain, one mighty train of weary lovers, anywhere and elsewhere bound, who shuffle, stand, and wait to top the mountain. I breathed them once, toiled, teared, and hand-heldled them in hundreds, in thousands, whose tales we never came to know, but listened to too often. Touchable no longer, we stand on their shoulders. They stand in our hearts. I stand, you stand, we stand together. We remain standing. We remain. We remain. We are the survivors. The tasks remain: universal access to treatment, safe access to medical cannabis, support for the sick and dying, to make our lives livable, whether we have AIDS or cancer, Crohn's disease, or glaucoma. Let us move forward together, working to save lives. Thank you very much for your work so far. Namaste.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Neverman.
Morning, Mr. President and Council. I always had the idea that the city attorney's job was to represent all interests of the city of LA, not just his own hidden agenda. And what, you know, I still have a problem with the taxpayers paying his salary for the days he's being wined and dined by groups such as the California Narcotics Officers You know, now he's teaming up with his friend over at the county, Steve Cooley, to try and hurt innocent medical marijuana patients that have never done anything to him. In fact, the medical marijuana patients and many of the collectives helped support him in office to get him elected. Maybe we should put the shoe on the other foot, and if I knew how to be literate enough to do a petition, maybe he could be recalled just as easy as Gray Davis was. You know, the taxpayers should not be paying him to be with the county and all these other groups to bring harm to us after, you know, we helped him. And it's just a — the waste of the taxpayers' money. Let them other people pay his salary and all the other people from the city that were wined and dined in Montebello not too long ago. I just came back from DC and made my voice heard, and the federal government has made a start in the right direction. I think the city needs to make a start in the right direction and recall Carmen Trutanich.
Remember Friday? Remember my psychotic ravings about the Marijuana Fest in Hollywood? Remember I said that if the LAPD wasn't there, there would be violence? In fact, there was violence. There was a shooting. The NBC — the KTLA crew are eyewitnesses to the shooting. They were taping Mickey Jackson. Mickey Jackson is going to come up. She was an eyewitness to the shooting. Someone was shot, and we don't know who, because it was kept quiet, and big guys with guns and blue suits, said security, took over. They have no insignia. We had no idea who they worked for. And here's a question. How many off-duty LAPD work as security at marijuana — medical marijuana clinics? If that question doesn't get me killed, I don't think anything will get me killed in the city. We're calling all addicts. Come to Hollywood Boulevard. Smoke, shoot up, do any damn thing you want. It is an arrest-free neighborhood. LAPD, how many citations has the Hollywood Division made on marijuana? Now, you want to know, I was on with Mickey for five minutes on NBC TV Digital, talking about this just yesterday. And I said, and I'll say it right here, to the President of the United States, who was allowing these medical marijuana clinics to go wild, I called him the N-word, and I will say it here. President Obama, Barack Obama, is a nimby. N-I-M-B-Y. Not in my backyard, not in Hyde Park, where he lives, not in Washington, DC, where he lives. No. The people are being stabbed to death in front of my yuckin' argot, in front of my door. And who is going to allow it to get even crazier and crazier? The President, who is an N-I-M-B-Y. That's the main — Hollywood Highlands.
Laura Gutierrez. Laura Gutierrez. Good morning, Ms. Gutierrez.
Good morning. My name is Laura Gutierrez, and I reside in Glassell Park. I'm also with the Vandy Camps Coalition. This is a city issue that we are addressing today. What we did is 10 years ago, we fought to save the historic Vandy Camps Bakery from being demolished. We did that, and we accomplished that, and with the help of Senator Polanco, we got the Los Angeles Community College District, and LACC, to place a city college there. Earlier this year, they voted to turn this campus over to the district, and now it is no longer a community college. And we found that through state laws, that since this is not going to be used as a community college, it's now — the zoning laws are not waived, and this is now under the city jurisdiction. This is an industrial site. What you have in there is the district has now leased part of the building to a charter school, and there is a section code that does not allow charter schools to go into industrial site without a conditional use permit. We are asking the city attorney's office to get involved. We have also been asking Los Angeles Building and Safety to get involved. We need to be careful with these children. They are right in the middle of a construction zone, and I hope that you will help us with this cause. Thank you.
Good morning, Mickey Jackson with the Vandy Camps Coalition. I want to elaborate on what Laura said. I am here because I am extremely concerned about the safety of children in a charter school. There has been no inspections by our Department of Building and Safety to make sure the building is safe. In fact, it is in a massive construction area. When we went and demonstrated the first day of school, August 31st, they would let no one on that site, including the bigwigs from Vice Chancellor and so on from LACC D, without a hard hat. Who was on the site without hard hats? Children. Children were on the sites. I have photographs of children going through heavy construction site, heavy construction equipment with no hard hats. Those children are not safe, and because we have made the city aware of this, we went to Plum. We asked for this. We asked that they inspect. And you know what we were told by the Chair of Plum? Oh, it's — to the effect that, oh, it is better that those buildings be occupied. Okay, let me get this straight. The city has decided no more building and safety inspections. It's better that buildings are occupied. I'm giving notice. Everyone, go out, occupy building. You don't need building and safety inspection. It's been said by the Chair of Plum. It's better the building is occupied. I'm calling on the city. You have now been made aware in every way possible. I believe the city makes itself liable if anything happens to those children because you have not inspected the site. There is no conditional use permit, nothing. I'm calling on the city. I'm calling on the city attorney. I'm calling on the city Building and Safety Department. Inspect those buildings. This is a dangerous construction site. If you do not inspect those buildings, you don't care about the safety of children. This is serious. The safety of children in a charter school.
Good morning, Council. Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard. To the relief of many not here today on behalf of the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition, but the Southwest Museum remains at risk by the current proposals of the Autry Museum. We're working with council on that. Today, Council, I rise to reinforce the concerns of the Vandy Camps Coalition regarding the recent conversion of that campus from a community college to a charter high school, and unemployment offices — and unemployment offices funded by the mayor's office. The LACC-D is exempt from the city zoning laws so long as it uses its building for its exempt purpose: community college classrooms. On July 15, 2009, the LACC-D transferred the $62 million Vandy Camps campus from LA City College to its administration, and then leased the first floor of the new education building to the politically-connected Alliance Charter High School. The city has zoning jurisdiction over the charter school issue. A grade or high school is not permitted by right in an MC2 zone. Alliance, since August 31st of this year, is operating in violation of the municipal code without a CUP. I'm informed that a different charter school has applied for a CUP in the same MC2 zone in the media center on the other side of the 2 freeway from Vandy Camps. Why is the city attorney not requiring consistent application of the zoning law to a similarly-situated charter school? The city attorney staff has been made aware of this noncompliance. They initially agreed with us that there was a violation, and now they're referring it to building and safety. We are talking about a need to immediately protect the safety of children going to school in a building site that is an active construction site. Council, we need action to restore the Vandy Camps campus as a community college. But the first step is to enforce uniformly your zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking my comments. I'm here to talk about the medical cannabis ordinance that is being discussed. It's to Public Safety Committee right now, and it's currently not on the agenda. I just want to say that it is solely the responsibility of this city council to pass an ordinance that is meaningful and workable for both patients and the community of, and the city of Los Angeles alike. The city attorney's office, I feel, has grossly mishandled this issue from the very beginning, from the loophole that created the problem in the first place, to allowing the, to allowing the moratorium to expire before an ordinance was actually passed. I feel like to follow the advice of the city attorney's office to ban all sales and effectively close down all the dispensaries and effectively close down all of safe access in Los Angeles would be a tragic mistake and a tragic error on the city council. Also, I'd want to say that banning sales over the counter, what it does is effectively put it into the black market, and so passing the ordinance as written by the city attorney's office as it presently stands would be a win for the street drug dealers in the city of Los Angeles, as well as the gangs, as well as the Mexican cartels that the city attorney has claimed that the dispensaries are getting their medicine from. I've worked in a dispensary, and I can tell you that that is not the case, that if you want to keep the budgets, if you want to hurt the Mexican cartels, what you want to do is you want to regulate safe access in Los Angeles. There is an article that came out the same day as Carmen Trutanich was spraying raid on a salad, that said that because of medical cannabis within the states that have passed it, it has significantly decreased the amount of income that the Mexican cartels are bringing in from cannabis, which is their main source of income. So if we want to be an asset to our community within Los Angeles, we want to pass an ordinance that allows safe access and brings it into regulation and not ban it and put it out into the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. On Saturday, this past Saturday, The Daily Breeze had an article regarding the 10th anniversary of Staples Center. In the article, it stated over 200, 2,250 events had been held at Staples Center. 2,250 events of free city public service. Luckily for the public, the Transportation Committee of L.A., the city of L.A., has held hearings regarding the elimination of the waiver allowing at least six city venues to receive free public safety services. Interestingly enough, during the committee hearings, the Chair of the Committee mentioned how glad he was that the discussion had been held. Rita Robinson mentioned, who is the head of the LADDOT, mentioned she had been trying to get the discussion agendized for over a year and a half. Fortunately, we recently had Councilman Parks give an explanation as to what administrative disconnect is. So maybe we could have another explanation as to why it took a year and a half to agendize this item regarding waiver of fees that these six venues got for free. Since the council is so, A, transparent, and B, so ethical, I mean, it's not as if the city needs the money. Today's agenda includes an item on amending the municipal code, yet the city transportation committee is sending out letters requesting that these venues pay the fees, not an amendment to the city code. It also includes item number seven, the city's administrative operations, and item number 10, police attrition. Well, maybe if the city had been collecting the fees from these six venues, that's over in the last two years, probably close to 500 events, maybe the attrition would be less.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. Our next speaker will be Hunter Hancock.
Hello, City Council. Thanks for hearing me speak. I'm Hunter Hancock, and I suffer from chronic condition known as Addison's Disease, which affects approximately 100, or 1 in 100,000 people. Due to my Addison's Disease, I must take high doses of cortisol and other pharmaceutical medicine at least twice a day for the rest of my life, to replace my body's inability to produce these life-sustaining hormones. Unfortunately, some of the prominent side effects of this medication include anxiety, depression, and hypertension. I also experience the chronic nausea and back pain associated with Addison's Disease, symptoms which are not cured by my daily intake of medication. It's such a perpetual conflict for me to have to take this medication, which literally keeps me alive, while continuing to hinder my everyday life with its negative side effects. Luckily, as a supplement to my pharmaceutical medication, I have the raw organic herb marijuana, which relieves virtually all of my remaining symptoms of Addison's Disease, as well as the negative and debilitating side effects of the necessary medication, which keeps me alive. There is not a single other medication I know of, or have been told by my doctors, that could do the same, and if you know of one, feel free to let me know. My endocrinologist is well aware of my marijuana use and is pleased to hear that it relieves my symptoms. As an Arizona transplant, I cannot begin to describe how amazing it feels to finally be an honest citizen in a great state, which allows me to use such an incredible drug, which, without the fear or prosecution of obtaining medication, which does not even qualify, sorry, on the streets, you know, is not medicine, and it does not qualify and will not relieve my symptoms. So in a collective environment, is the one place where I can get this without needing to resort to drug dealers on the streets, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. David Gonzalez II.
Good morning. I work for Pacific Asian Consortium and Employment. I'm a business consultant. I have an announcement, Fourth Annual Asian Business and Career Fair on Wednesday, October 28, 2009, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Pasadena, Pasadena City Convention Center. I'd like to talk about what it is I do with Jose Weisar in the 14th District. I'm walking the streets and talking to all business owners and would-be entrepreneurs in terms of what I do for this nonprofit organization. I have seminars going on, on a month, monthly basis, at the Boyle Heights Technology Youth Center here in Boyle Heights area. I want to personally thank Jose Weisar. I've been trying to speak to him for several months, and I'm glad he's here to listen to me talk about the great work that we're doing in his district. I just recently talked to Janice Hahn's office with the Economic Development Director. I've spoken to several secretaries for every district in Los Angeles, which includes, I guess, 15. I guess I have you all here. I'd like to speak to each one of your offices, and most specifically, Economic Development Department, about what I do right now in the 14th District, which is a great success. I like to mirror this, which basically I call a cookie cutter process for every district. If I do have your attention, please, again, my name is David Gonzalez. I'm coming from PACE, Pacific Asian Consortium and Employment, and we're doing a lot of great work for the community at large, more specifically, the business owners that elect you into office. So thank you again for your time.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. Once again, I've come to you and asked for Mr. Reyes's office's help in this matter, but he chooses not to do anything about it. We have property that's blight, yet you choose to rent it out. Yesterday, there was an accident on Huntington Drive by someone from the Paramount Picture Studios. We've got reckless drivers, we've got people in golf carts with no lights, driving around at night. We also have people who are driving vehicles that don't have lights. I spoke to an LAPD officer who's rented by them, and he said he was aware of it, but nothing was done about it. Called Hollenback Police Department, they did nothing about it. But Mr. Reyes chooses to have a conversation right now instead of pay attention to what's going on here. So anyways, we got a rental going on, we got the li, quality of life of people in this area disrupted, but Mr. Reyes doesn't care about it. All it is, bottom line, is making money. Most of you people who spoke earlier today saw that nobody here was paying attention to them. We got Mr. Reyes in a conversation, Mr. Rosenthal in another conversation, and Mr. Parks in another conversation, and nobody else is sitting at their desk. So are they listening to you guys? No! They don't care, they're just listening. Mr. Corres is saying he's listening, but he's eating. Okay? Let's pay attention, gentlemen. I'm not a difficult person to get along, but I don't take no for an answer real easy. Okay? We have illegal parking right across the street at the new police station. Why? Because this city council allows it. We have two officers in here, which I hope are not illegally parked outside. This illegally parked is against the law, and these officers took a sworn oath not to break the law. A shame on you if you don't do anything about it.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Green. I live at 4012 East Fifth Street, and I am a prostate cancer survivor. I'm here today to particularly ask the women of the council, only one present now, about the conduct of the city attorney in intimidating witnesses. All over YouTube this past week, city attorney has been challenged for admonishing members of the neighborhood council and intimidating them. That is not conduct that is acceptable from an elected public official, and I feel that the council needs to curb his tendency to jump on voters and jump on folks who he does not agree with. Is there any, within the code of conduct of elected officials, is there any way to determine what is an appropriate action for a city attorney who is acting like a child? Thank you.
Soledad Garcia. I believe she is in the San Fernando Valley. Oh, she's in San Pedro, I'm sorry. San Pedro.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chairperson Perry. My name is Soledad Soledres Garcia. I am from San Pedro, and I'm here to ask the city council to oversee the selection of a, of a brand-new DWP general manager, and to have you reconsider the offering of a contract to a recently resigned general manager who has taken on a handsome employment with this Secretary of State. The community of Los Angeles, this community of Los Angeles needs stability and good leadership in the position of general manager at DWP. In the 12 years that I have been working with the DWP and the community, I have seen 12 general managers, either interim or temporary. Please, we do need that stability. I would ask also that you solicit an experienced utility person who is knowledgeable in engineering, management, or financial, and has had the experience of any and all of them. It's most important that the stakeholders be included, and the neighborhood councils also be included in the selection of the general manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Damian Goodman, back in City Hall.
Madam President, Damian Goodman, representing Citizens Campaign to Fix the Expo Rail Line, and I'll speak also in my capacity as the co-chair of the Empowerment Congress West Area Neighborhood Council. I want to say on behalf of the ECW-ANDC, we're deeply disappointed by the decision regarding the medical marijuana suit that, that came down this weekend, or last week, and we consider it a failure of your leadership. For two years, you've had an ordinance which you could have adopted and modified time after time, and instead, our communities of South Los Angeles and other areas are being rampaged with this, the proliferation of these places, which have no interest in actually providing medical marijuana to those who are in need, of which I know many people, but rather making a quick buck. We, at the Taste of So this weekend, which was a phenomenal event, a facility which Mr. Huizar, or, and Mr. Zine had told to close down just three weeks ago, was open for business with the sign outside that said, "Get your doctor's prescription here. Ask me how." It's despicable, but it's what happens when you have the proliferation of a substance which is strong and which is scarce without regulation. So adopt an ordinance, do it now, you're late. The second issue I'm going to speak to in my capacity as the Chair of the Fix Expo Campaign regards to the nighttime variance for construction activities. Already in this city, this expo line, which is being constructed both in Los Angeles and in Culver City, already in Los Angeles, we get two hours of additional construction. It begins at 9:00 a.m. here and ends, forgive me, it begins at 7:00 a.m. and ends at 9:00 p.m. It begins at 8:00 a.m. and ends at 8:00 p.m. in Culver City. Yet, a variance was given to the construction authority to do this activity between 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. in the middle of residential communities. It's despicable. It's inexplicable as well, and it's another product of a failure of this leadership. If I was before the city of Culver City right now, no way would this variance have been allowed.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Patrick McCullough. Mr. Patrick McCullough.
Good morning. My name's Patrick McCullough. I represent the Expo Neighbors Association. My complaint is all-night construction on the Expo Rail project, the 4100 block of Exposition Boulevard where I live. Our neighbors can't sleep at night because of the construction. It's, it's creating excessive unnecessary and annoying noise right in the residential zone, and nobody has offered us anything other than excuses. We, we would like to request hotel vouchers or stop the nighttime activity. Thank you.
Mr. Clint Simmons.
Good morning, Madam President, Council members. My name is Clint Simmons. I'm representing the West Adam Neighborhood Council, which encompasses an area that goes east to Crenshaw, west to Los Enigur, south to Rodeo Road, and north to the 10 freeway. I'm here today to speak about a noise variance that has been broken, that the city council itself has put into effect. I'm speaking specifically in terms of municipal code number 41.40, which gives the construction companies the time of day that they are to do constructions. companies the time of day that they are to do constructions, and any variance, it should be a cohesiveness with the community at which this particular construction is being taken care of. At the present time, the Expo Authority is doing construction at night, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. This is an area from Dunsmere to Crenshaw Boulevard, and that encompasses La Brea, Dorsey High School, and Buckingham. And what we wish to do here is that the neighborhood council was never informed about this night work and activity, and why is it that Los Angeles is so differently from Culver City? Culver City, they have no work after 8:00 at night, but in the city of Los Angeles, they can work anytime after 9:00 until 7:00 the next morning, as long as it in blacks and Latino community, that's what it looks like here to me. In other areas, you do not have the type of construction going on at night as you have here in the city of Los Angeles. The neighborhood council was never informed about this? Why? The community, the people who live along the construction site was never informed. I live right there, and I never got a knock on my door to see if I approved it. So I realize you're not paying us any attention here, but a lot of people would say to the representative we have here, you're just not working down.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simmons. That closes our public comment, period. Mr. Rosenthal, I believe you had a question before we move on through the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Item 23, which a lot of my community folks are very interested in, I know we're going to do it after item 24, and I just want to make sure the city planning department and city attorney's offices here for item 23, because we have some questions to ask them.
All right, great. All right. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Council Rosenthal, don't worry, we took care of that, we made sure that the planning department's here, city attorney, so we are focused on this issue, so do not worry, we'll have staff here.
Great. Thank you very much. And Mr. Zine, before you begin with your presentation on 24, we do have one speaker card, would you like to have the speaker go before your presentation?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Walsh, John Walsh is our speaker on 24.
I'll just take one minute. I will defer to Mr. Zine. HollywoodHighlands.org, you saw us on NBC TV yesterday afternoon, and there's one important thing I want to make clear. We are anti-racists, and when we hear people talking about Mexican cartel, there are no Mexican drug cartels. It doesn't have anything to do with skin color. And I heard these people talking about the Mexican drug dealers. Gangsters have no color.
Excuse me, Madam President, I don't believe he's talking about this item.
I know. If I talk about anti-racism, I'm out of order. You're out of order. Ask Mr. Tutanich if I'm out of order.
Mr. Walsh, you're going to have to stay on topic, or I'll have to cut your time. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Zine. Oh, I'm sorry. But before we commence, you wanted to ask a question about, we have 12 people present now on item number...
Yes, Madam President, on the ordinances, items 1 through 5, and 20, 21, and 22.
Do we have any speaker cards on any of those items? All right, there are no speakers in the queue on any of those items, so I would ask you to please open the roll, close the roll, then tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, thank you very much. 20 through 22 will go forth with. All right, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. If I can have the personnel involved in the Powell case, please join me, the representatives of the city attorney's office, the Los Angeles police officers, folks that are involved in this particular case of litigation, Powell versus City of Los Angeles. If I can please have them join me. And we're going to show something on the screen regarding this. Last week, I was in my City Hall office when I was asked by the city attorney to go over to the Hill Street Court, which I did, and I was, shall we say, surprised and shocked at a tragic situation that occurred to one of our Los Angeles police officers, and the wonderful way the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office handled the matter, and we titled this "Defending the City: Powell versus City of Los Angeles." We have on the screen the folks that were involved in this, from the police litigation unit, Denise Johnson, if you'll please stand, take a bow, the lady who defended the city of Los Angeles, Linda Crowell, legal assistant. Where's Melinda? Linda Carvale, investigator, Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD officer assigned to the city attorney's office, and the officers from Rampart Division at the time they were involved in this, Officer Andrew Taylor. Andrew, get over here, please, come over here. This is the officer that was shot four times, who's back to work full duty. Officer Joseph Gedrol, Joe? Officer William Skeet, Officer James De Meo. Here's what happened in this situation. This is a reenactment that was presented by the city attorney's office, a Powell's detained and handcuffed. Mr. Powell had on him a knife, and that knife was discovered during the search, and sadly, Mr. Powell, being an individual who know how to conceal items, was sitting at the time handcuffed, and as you can see, an officer standing in front. What we find then is Mr. Powell rises to his feet, and as he rises to his feet, out from his back, he draws a .357 caliber, .357 revolver, he draws that while he's handcuffed, and then he shoots Officer Taylor four times. Point-blank range shoots Officer Taylor. And then, we find one bullet strikes Officer Taylor's holstered weapon, which disabled the weapon. Officer Taylor is struck four times by the .357. These are where the bullets struck, one shot strike Officer Taylor's chest, his badge over his heart saves his life. You'll see the badge with a bullet hole in the badge. Another shot strikes his chest. The vest protected, part of it, and sadly, one of the bullets penetrated into his chest. And despite being shot four times, Officer Taylor then wrestled Powell back to the ground. Fellow officers rushed to his assistance, and subsequent, the assailant, Mr. Powell, was killed. Well, then comes the lawsuit. An individual that shot an Los Angeles police officer four times, his survivors sued the city. The liability on this case was $30 million. $30 million for an individual that shot four times a Los Angeles police officer. And in this particular case, due to the wonderful work by the defense team from the city of Los Angeles, it was decided that the verdict by the jury was no money to the survivors of Mr. Powell. And I think this is an example of what we need to send out when people attack members of our public, including police officers, that we will defend the actions, we will make sure that justice is deemed and justice is appropriate. And on behalf of the city attorney's office and the Los Angeles City Council, City of Los Angeles, I have commendations here for Andrew Taylor, Los Angeles Police Department, William Skeet. Where'd he go? William? Linda? Come on down. And the lady who was in court, who came back with this wonderful verdict, Denise, come This, when I went to court and I saw these officers, and we came back to City Hall, you ran up the steps of City Hall like Rocky. When you got to the top of the steps, this is an example of a dedicated member of Los Angeles Police Department and his partners that worked together. So you had an individual who was no concerned for human life, including that of a Los Angeles police officer, that shot this officer four times, and thank God he's here, back to work, protected and serving the people of Los Angeles with his wonderful partners, and thanks to city attorney's office for defending the city. And this is one of the many litigation cases that we have not given away money that the city desperately needs to operate, operation in the city. And we're joined this morning by Carmen Tutanich, our elected city attorney, Mr. Tutanich.
Good morning, Madam President. When this case came down from the courts, I had an opportunity to meet with Dennis about it, Mr. Zine, and he decided to make this presentation. But on Friday, the following day, in federal court, we took on another police-involved shooting. And the city attorney assigned to that case was Rena Shandea. Rena, are you here? And Detective Tony Yumansky, investigator, and Margaret DeVicen was the legal secretary on the team, and the city also defended that case with no liability. Before you is a list of the, I've given you a report for 115 days of what we've done in terms of defending the city, and you guys should have that. This is just one of many lawsuits that we continue to take on and fight in the city attorney's office. Rena, for a job well done in defending the Los Angeles Police Department.
Thank you.
Madam President, colleagues, I thank you for this opportunity. I know it's unusual that we do this, but this was such a moving case, when I saw what happened and how the city was defended, and how this litigation could have cost the city $30 million. I thought it was important to bring it before you, before the people of Los Angeles, to let them know that we are defending the tax dollars. So, thank you very much, Madam President, thank you, colleagues.
Mr. Beaufort, Mr. Zine, Mr. Huizar would like to speak, and Mr. Labonge would like to speak.
Okay, Mr. Huizar.
Well, thank you very much, Zine. I think this is very appropriate, that we bring into the chambers for all of Los Angeles to see what wonderful people we have working for the city of Los Angeles, not only working for us to make sure that we do our best job in providing our services, but people who actually put their lives on the line each and every day. Thank you so much on behalf of the residents of the city of Los Angeles, and also as our As our city attorney mentioned, I sit on the Budget and Finance Committee, and let me tell you, your city attorney staff, Mr. City Attorney, is in there all the time, working on behalf of the city to save us dollars, sometimes from ridiculous lawsuits, sometimes we're doing the best we can to ensure that we save our taxpayers' dollars, and we don't see that often. It's a closed session, but they're working their heart each and every day. I want to thank your staff and the wonderful work they do. Thank you so much.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Madam President, Mr. Zine, to our city attorneys who worked the case, to our city attorney who's here, to our police officers. I just wanted to stand, every day is a blessing, and you don't know what happens today that you end up in what is a long series of a life-threatening situation, the recovery, and then this incident here that causes you to wonder why you do what you do. But thankfully, we have an aggressive office that tries to seek justice. When the city's right, the city should always be wrong. Excuse me, the city's right, the city should always be on the right side. If we're wrong, we should stand up and say we're wrong. In other cases where we were wrong, we had to do what we had to do. But in this case, I want to thank everybody for being involved, for the fight of doing this here. And also, particularly, I want to thank the police officers, because there's only so many police officers out of 4 million people who are daily serving us throughout the community of Los Angeles, not knowing what they're going to have expected them. And I thank you, and thank your families, which is very important. Mr. Zine, thank you very much for recognizing everybody for this day, and Mr. Carmen Tutanich, thank you very much for your leadership and being aggressive in this way, and trying to seek justice, which is so important for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Rosenthal?
Just a quick comment, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for your leadership. You've done an incredible job since you've come on board, and we are very grateful for your leadership. And I want to thank the folks right there for standing up for what is right. You know, when a police officer puts on that uniform and they're in harm's way, they are in harm's way. And the fact that you went to court and you were able to resolve this in favor of us is most appreciated, and we're grateful you receive it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Zine. We will note and file this presentation. All right, now we will go back to, I believe, 23, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Reyes is our first speaker on item 23. And Mr. Reyes, we have a number of speaker cards on this item, would you let me know whether you'd like to take them now, or would you like to take them later?
Let's take them now, so that when the department personnel comes forward, they have a better grasp of the nature of their concerns.
All right, we have a number of cards, so I'm going to call them four people at a time, and if you would line up at the microphone. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker, followed by David Wright. Is Mr. David Wright still present? All right, David Wright, and then Doug Haynes. Doug Haynes, are you present?
Can I defer to Dan first?
Well, Mr., yeah, let's just keep going. Doug Haynes, and then Marion Dodge, are you present? Okay.
Okay. Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Burt Road, El Sreno, Northeast LA. "Informed Consent and the Right of the Citizens to Petition Their Government is Fundamental to the United States." At what price? How much do we have to pay in order to exercise our rights, right of the citizen? Actually, not all decisions are appealed. Maybe the council files do not reflect the actual outcomes of the appeals. If they're successful appeals, why should we have to pay at all? Some discussions have been appealed to this council, and eventually overturned, and sent back to the Board of Public Works or to the Board of Water and Power. Why do we appeal, and why do appeals arise, and why are they granted? Maybe it's a matter that the application was in error, maybe it was because the staff didn't do the right job. Please vote to overturn the August 12 fee changes. Please reject the current proposed additional amendments to further increase the price of our constitutional rights to petition and to receive informed consent. Thank you.
All right, David Wright, you're up next. After David Wright will be Doug Haynes.
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard. The planning department changes to the appeal fees apparently was done with maybe some limited public hearings that were advertised as planning fees, and homeowner organizations and the average members of the public, to the best of my knowledge, were not aware that these fee discussions at the planning department level included appeal fees which impinge on constitutionally protected and charter-guaranteed rights to review and correct flawed planning and building and safety decision-making. The right to appeal is fundamental, as a right to petition government. As a municipal law attorney for over 25 years, including my service as a deputy counsel to the Appointed Charter Reform Commission, I have serious concerns about the fairness of the amount of the proposed new appeal fees and the inherently unfair two-tiered fee structure that marks an unprecedented departure from the uniform appeal fees historically applied by the city to these constitutionally and charter-mandated right to petition government through an appeal. I understand there may be some thought about an amending motion today to exempt homeowner groups. I'd like to express my opposition to that, because I really think that you've got a problem here that needs closer examination than what you can do in today's meeting without making appropriate findings. Our recommendation is that you do need to suspend the operation of the current ordinance by suspending Section 3 of the ordinance 180,847. I have other examples I could provide during our discussion about problems, but I'm limited in my time... in my time, which is expiring right now. I remain available to provide further information. Thank you very much, Councilmembers.
Thank you very much, sir. And Mr. Wright, just so you know, it said David on the card. If you'd like to correct it later, you're welcome to do so. Doug Haynes, and following Doug Haynes will be Marion Dodge.
Good morning. My name's Doug Haynes, and I'm a board member of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. And I ask that you reconsider the proposed appeal fee increases for the following reasons. This ordinance would, for the first time, create a two-tiered fee for appealing planning department and building and safety department decisions based on whether or not the appellant resides within the legally required notification area. The current appeal fee for all agreed parties of a planning department approval is $74. The new appeal fee would be $150 for people within the notification area and $500 for everyone else. The building and safety fee would increase from $368 to $3,000 for those outside the notification area. The problem with the system is that many planning department and building and safety decisions only require notification to the adjacent property owner, meaning that an affected homeowner only two houses down would be forced to pay $500 to appeal a planning department decision instead of $150. Also, large development projects have large traffic impacts. If an environmental impact report clearly shows that a project will significantly and permanently impact an established residential neighborhood outside of the official notification area, why then should those residents be forced to spend specifically more to file their appeal? Why also should organizations advocating on behalf of low-income housing or the preservation of historic buildings be forced to pay a high appeal fee merely because they do not have an office located within a project's notification radius? Additionally, large developments are comprised of multiple discretionary approvals, and each must be appealed separately at every level in order to exhaust your administrative revenues. Since you must appeal each approval to different city bodies at separate levels, appeals will now cost thousands of dollars. Dramatically increasing the cost of appeal is punitive to those attempting to have their grievances heard, especially since appeals are not frivolous, but are instead sincere attempts by your constituents to correct an approval process that often turns to death your...
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Our next speaker is Marion Dodge. Following Marion Dodge will be Elizabeth Naglin. Is Elizabeth present? You can come on up front. And John Walsh will be after Elizabeth. And then following John Walsh will be David Bell. Marion Dodge.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Marion Dodge. I'm past president of the Los Feliz Improvement Association. Our board has not taken a position on this item, so I'm speaking as an individual this morning. The proposed changes in appeal fees was clearly not initiated to increase the city's strapped revenues. Indeed, it gives huge cuts to big developers. But neighbors and community associations are faced with huge increases. One might get the impression that council wishes to favor big developers while restricting the voices of the common people. Is this the message that you want to send to your constituents? I urge you to carefully and publicly reconsider these fee changes. Thank you very much.
Elizabeth Naglin?
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name's Elizabeth Naglin. I'm representing Venskis &amp; Associates. I urge you not to adopt item number 23. The council file is lacking essential information that the council needs to consider before deciding this issue. There is no comprehensive fee study, so the council and the public do not know the full range of the administrative services and functions covered by the fee, the cost placed by the agency on services rendered, or whether the fee structure bears a reasonable relationship to such costs. Also, the council file does not explain why certain appeal fees would be higher for persons residing outside of the legal noticing area. Second, this would become a constitutional issue. It would violate citizens' right to redress grievances, prevent them from exhausting their administrative remedies, and consequently deny their access to courts. We are very concerned. Our clients are citizens and nonprofit organizations. This ordinance would make it impossible for citizens to appeal and will unconstitutionally deny their access to courts. Do not adopt item number 23. Thank you very much.
John Walsh?
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Notice you don't see anybody in favor of this ordinance, because they've done their work already, the big developers. They've hired huge lobbyist firms, and they've all lobbied you. Raise your hand if you haven't been lobbied on this issue. Let the record show. Well, they know you're going to vote against it, Rosendahl, so you don't count. If you're going to... They're not going to waste their money at $300 an hour trying to get you to change your vote when they know you're going to vote against it. But nobody except Rosendahl, all getting paid. Rosendahl, are you sure? Oh, I want it in writing. Two of them out of 15, two out of 15 haven't been lobbied. Ladies and gentlemen, the fix is in, and next year they're going to change it. It's going to be $500 and a half pint of blood from anybody who wants to appeal. One minute.
David... Thank you, Mr. Walsh. David Bell, Louise Frankel, and Andrew Schwartz, and Elva Yanis. David Bell.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. My name's David Bell, and I'm the president of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. I'm here on behalf of myself. The Neighborhood Council hasn't... This hasn't been put on the agenda, but I've gotten quite a few emails and calls from stakeholders concerned about the fact that creating this two-tiered system would violate the, basically, the fundamental right to petition the government for redress of grievances. And it appears that there is no rational relation between... If the object is to raise funds for the city, it doesn't make sense to place a cap on what developers have to pay while raising the fees for, basically, what amount to watchdog groups in our neighborhood that perform public service in challenging development and raising issues that aren't often raised by people who live within the designated area. And then also, it just... It appears to be punitive and unfair. I mean, just... I'm not... I'm no expert on these things, but to go from $368 for an ordinary appeal up to somewhere around $3,000 just seems... It seems unfair. It seems arbitrary, capricious, irrational, and it seems to violate the state and national constitution, interfering with people's right to access the courts and to seek redress of grievances from their government. So we would urge... Or I would urge that you reject this amendment. Thank you.
Louise Frankel?
I'm Louise Frankel, representing the Mountain Gate Community Association and our sister associations on Mulholland, Bel Air Knolls, and Bel Air Skycrest, who could not be here today. On behalf of the Mountain Gate Community Association, I wish to communicate our concern with what is... Seems to be about to be approved by the city council. I refer to item 23, increase of planning appeal fees. We are concerned that, one, it reduces fees drastically for developers while increasing fees to homeowners to the point where it will effectively keep many organizations from participating in city government and its decisions. One of those things which distinguishes Los Angeles from any of the great cities of our country, or as the world, is that our charter opens the door for all to participate, to all to have a voice, regardless of their ethnicity, or financial status, or political persuasion. And I must say, when I moved here from my small town, the local government, we had... We used to say in that town, "The only thing that could help us would be 15 prominent funerals." Well, I want to reassure you that I have never wished for that since moving to Los Angeles. The residents of this community count on your good judgment in preserving this example of democracy in action. Thank you.
Andrew Schwartz?
I think it's... Should say Ellen Schwartz. I have very bad handwriting.
It's Hollywood Heritage and Hollywood Studio Neighborhood Association?
Okay, I'm the Ron Schwartz.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we're related. I'm Andrew Schwartz. I'm the president of Hollywood Heritage, and I'm also a member of the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council. But I'm not speaking on behalf of them. I urge a no vote on the proposed increase in the fee structure. This has a dramatic impact on people who have vested interest in the neighborhoods that they live in for development. This definitely favors developers. The fees are outrageous. I think... I look upon this as almost like poll taxes in the South, excluding blacks, from exercising their rights. As other people have said, these fees are outrageous. Groups that normally would have an access to the system to protest any development no longer will have that option because of these fees. I know that would especially affect a group like my group, Hollywood Heritage. The fees, if we wanted to appeal something, would be out of the range that we could afford that. So again, I urge city council to vote no on these proposed new fee arrangements. Thank you.
Elva Yanis? Following Elva will be Olga Hall. Following Olga will be Barbara Monahan Burke. And following Barbara Monahan Burke will be Ellen Schwartz. And then our last speaker will be Henrietta Cosentino.
Thank you. My name is Elva Yanis. I'm here today representing Green LA Coalition and its Cumulative Impacts Work Group. The work group addresses the environmental health impacts of pollution on low-income communities of color in Los Angeles. The work group urges the city council to suspend action on these planning appeal fee increases. The council documents for this item show that the changes to the planning appeal fees will significantly cut them for developers while raising the appeal fees paid by residents or nonprofit organizations representing them. Contrary to the city's commitment to environmental justice, these excessive fees will unfairly exclude low-income residents and nonprofit organizations from the planning and land use decision-making process. The appeal process serves as an important point of resident involvement in planning and land use decision-making, and has a long history of preserving the quality of life in Los Angeles and protecting the health and safety of its residents. The appeal fee hikes deny low-income residents and nonprofits their fundamental rights to appeal. In closing, the Cumulative Impacts Work Group urges the city council to suspend action on the appeal fee increases, conduct a thorough analysis of these fee changes, in particular the exclusionary impacts of those... On those sectors of the city that can least afford them, and hold a public hearing on the findings, as well as alternative proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Olga Hall?
Good morning, Mr. and Mrs. President and members of this council. My name is Olga Hall. And the speakers before me have expressed very clearly what the issue is, but I'm going to tell you the way I think about it. We all need to wake up to the realization that each one of us is a cell of a body called Earth. We are intertwined much more than we would like to care or believe. This Earth body that we are all part of has become infected by a cancer called greed and power. These cancerous cells are using their greed and power to destroy other cells. What these cancerous cells fail to understand is that at the end, they too will be victims of their own actions. You, like all of us, want to be respected, but how can you ask for respect if your actions are unfair or uncalled? I just found out about this last night at midnight, that the planning fee ordinance proposes to cut the appeal fees paid by the biggest estate developers by the tens of thousands of dollars, while raising fees paid by an aggrieved homeowner by as much as 1,500 percent. Is that fair? Is that kind to everyone? I believe you can do a great job. You have that capacity. And you must remember that we are all in this together. So I'm asking you to reject item 23. Thank you.
Barbara Monahan Burke?
Good afternoon, Honorable Counsel. Barbara Monahan Burke, representing both the Studio City Neighborhood Council... I'm a board member. And the Studio City Residents Association. We have, within the Neighborhood Council, not had time to vote on this, but over and over, we do support citizen appeals, so I know that the board would support what I'm saying. Outreach has not been adequate, and calling a special meeting on this, just 24-hour special compounds the problem. The MCs, at this point, are not allowed by you, the city council, to appeal land use decisions, even though the former city attorney's office opined that it would be legal for MCs to be able to appeal land use decisions. So it is even more unfair for appeal fees to be increased for repellents, who usually are individual stakeholders. I had to appeal a local land use issue myself this year with the fees. And also, as well as individuals, resident associations that have meager means or other types of organizations. At the same time, big business, big developers, these entities that do not respect our individuals' communities with their styles and characters, get unfettered access, basically. Please defeat this request for increasing fees for constituent appeals. This would restrict access for ordinary constituents, and the two-tiered system is blatantly discriminatory. I agree that this is a citizens' rights issue for access to courts, and that has to be considered. Do the right thing. Vote no. Thank you.
Ellen Schwartz?
Good morning. My name is Ellen Schwartz. I'm a homeowner in Los Angeles. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Brentwood Homeowners Association, but I'm not officially speaking for them today, because we did not have a chance to meet about this. All the... I suspect that they would be completely on board with what I'm going to say, since our calculation is that a recent appeal that we won would have cost us about $20,000 in fees under this new proposal. We're very concerned about this increase. In effect, this measure further increases the disproportionate power of developers and suppresses the voice of individuals and the community groups who represent them. Please do not disenfranchise the people who elected you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Henrietta Cosentino?
Good morning, members of the council. I am here from St. Andrews Square as secretary and a member of the Board of St. Andrews Square, which is in the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council district. And I want to really endorse everything that has already been said, so I do not need to take a lot of time, but I do want to commend our own Councilman Tom Lavand for putting his voice on the right side of this issue, and also, of course, Councilman Rosendahl. In our little neighborhood, we have had, in the past six months, four cases, land use cases, which, if each of them were to go against us, and if we were to appeal, we would have been hard-pressed to do so. We would have been very severely impacted by this new proposed raise in rates. So I urge you to send it back for reconsideration. And I think it should be decoupled from... The question of appeal fees should be decoupled from the question of green fees. It's very important that this be done in such a way that ordinary citizens and nonprofit associations, homeowners groups, neighborhood associations, and neighborhood councils not be stifled in their ability to appeal bad decisions. Thank you very much. I hope you will strongly consider all of our voices this morning.
Thank you very much. That marks the end of our speaker cards. Mr. Reyes, following Mr. Reyes will be Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank everyone that came here this morning. I believe there's been a great injustice in how information has been essentially shared with you. And I'd like to ask the staff that has been working on this issue, as they're coming up, if you can come onto the center table, please. You should know, colleagues, that we have been engaging this for well over a year. You should know, colleagues, that we have been engaging this for well over a year. We began in April 17th in terms of dealing with this issue from a committee point of view, and have held about eight different sessions, either through committee or joint committee. I want to thank Councilmember Parks for having the joint committee with budget and finance and planning. And essentially, this is about how we make this city function more efficiently. This is about creating protections for neighborhoods. And as we heard the speakers, I want to pose this question to you, both here at the table, and I want to make it very clear, because we've heard it more than once, that our action reduces fees drastically for developers while increasing fees to homeowners to the point where it will effectively keep many organizations from participating in city, government, and its decisions. Now, I want to start with that question and hold my time, but please, can you answer that question? And let's speak to what we've done as a city, and if you can address why we are doing this. Please hold my time.
Good morning. Eva Yor McDonald, City Planning, Deputy Director. Let me first address the question regarding the drastic fee cut for developers. I have to say that I think there's a misunderstanding of what the Planning Department is trying to address in this comprehensive fee study. The fee study was initiated to look at how our fees are structured and also to achieve full-cost recovery wherever possible. And we have recommended, during the time of the review, to subsidize, to ask the city to subsidize single-family homeowners in terms of their land use fees, and that was adopted by council and will be effective Monday next week. And planning appeal fees, I believe is the one that is in question, for land use actions conducted by the Planning Department, for applicants, or I think in some cases referred as developers, is not $150 or $500, it's 85 percent of the total cost of the original case application fee. And it can be somewhere, it can be $10,000, it could be $12,000, or it could be lower based on the value of the original application. But for the aggrieved party, or parties who believe that they're aggrieved by the planning action, when they're within the notice distance of 500 or a budding, it's 150. Outside the distance, it's 100.
Let's just pause it for a second, because you said two very important points.
Yes.
The first point is that the high-dollar amounts you were referring to pertains to the developer, correct?
Yes. Or any applicant, it could be homeowners.
Okay. Now, the $150 fee is for those folks within the 500-foot range?
Or any legal notice distance for that particular case.
So went from $75 to 150 for the 500-foot range?
Yes.
For those who feel they've been aggrieved?
Yes.
Okay, so, I want to make sure I amplify that, because it's not the thousands, and it's not the whatever amounts we've been hearing. Please go ahead.
And Councilmen, and all the council members, I also want to bring up another point, that is, there are two types of appeals we're talking here. The first one, there was what I just described, that is, the appeals on the planning cases, decisions made by the Planning Department. And the second one, I believe everyone is talking about, is the appeals on building and safety action. And building and safety has the power or legal authority to make actions or make interpretations or requirements to residents, homeowners, in the L.A. area. For any action done by the Building and Safety Department, isn't a person or a party feels that they are aggrieved by the action that's related to the zoning code, they can appeal to the Planning Department? But to the Planning Department, because we were not involved in the initial decision-making, to us, our case processing employees have to do this whole thing from the very beginning. We process this appeal like a case, like a case that we would do in the Planning Department. It involves field study, it involves, we have to conduct a hearing or hearings, and we have to make a decision, and we have to write a decision letter and mail to all the involved parties and interested parties. And that is a very costly process because of the requirements. If you recall, when the Planning Department came forward with a report and with a full-cost recovery strategy, that is actually over $7,000. That was the original cost with the city overhead added to it. And in the ordinance adopted by council on the 12th of August, we recommended to not implement the citywide search, citywide overhead in year one, so the cost within the ordinance was $6,188.
That's a department?
And that is full-cost recovery.
And that's a Department of Building and Safety?
Appeal.
Appeal.
To the Planning Department.
That leads to a full investigation?
Yes.
And that's why it's so costly?
It's very, yes. And then, after the ordinance was adopted, and we heard some more feedback from the communities, and we feel that, you know, it is, even though it costs that much money, we feel that to, for the process not be cost prohibitive, we wanted to make another recommendation to bring the, bring the fee down, but without generating too much burden on the already very scarce general fund. That's why we're recommending today. The $1,000 for the applicant of the permit, which could be a small permit, or the abetting owners, that's a legal notice area, or $3,000 for parties outside that area.
Okay. Now, on April 17th, the department posts all the fee study-related documents in the department's internet, website, and separate emails to stakeholders, including business organizations and certified neighborhood councils.
Yes.
And that was back in April 17th?
Yes. That was our final report to council.
And that is what was made public so many months ago?
Yes.
And so, since then, I have not heard the type of frustration I'm hearing today. We had several hearings in committee. We had the joint committee with our finance committee. So I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that I want to make this as transparent as possible, that we essentially informed all the different stakeholders in the city, and until we had this misinformation that seems to be out there, that has triggered this reaction, it was a very, it was very important to me, we put on record exactly what it is we're doing. So what is before us today?
Okay. Councilman, if you allow me, I would like to just real quick go through the chronology of what the department has done. April 17th was the first time we presented the final comprehensive fee study to council. But before that, we had several meetings with community groups and representatives of the development community, and also, we have sent out draft, and posted draft, the draft report in our internet site, and also to the neighborhood councils. And then, on the May 20, on May 29th, the City Attorney submitted the ordinance, the draft ordinance, and the ordinance was posted in the city website the same day. And on June 1st, council, Plumb Committee, and the Budget and Finance Committee conducted a joint hearing, and that lasted a while. And the two committees heard public comments and asked staff to come back with a report, and then decided to send the item forward to council without any recommendation. And council first heard the report on the 5th of August, and on that day, council also took public comments and then voted for the ordinance, but the ordinance required a second reading, so on the 12th of August, council again had this item on the agenda and finally adopted the ordinance. And on the 25th of August, the mayor signed this into law. So, and in addition to all this that we have done, there was a 60-day waiting period, and we, since August 25th, so that's why the ordinance is effective next Monday. In front of you is an amendment to the ordinance to address four items. And the first one is, the City Attorney can, next to me, can go into more details, but we had a complaint or concern over the Brown Act issue, which indicated or alleged that the city did not adequately notice the item. I will ask the City Attorney to go into more detail on that, but I also want to just quickly go over the other three. The second thing is that to bring the Brown Building Program processing fee correctly, but restore that back to $282 to cover the City Planning Department's cost, it was indicated as $88 in the ordinance, so we're bringing it back to the old level of 282. And then, the third one, the fourth one, was the, to address the appeal fee concerns that we heard. And now, if you allow me, I'll ask Sharon Cudov-Cargnes to talk about the Brown Act issue.
If you will, please, yes.
Sharon Cudov-Cargnes, City Attorney's Office. After the council adopted the fee ordinance on August the 12th, the city received a letter on September the 2nd contending that the Brown Act description was not sufficient to inform the public that the appeal fees were also part of the ordinance. Out of an abundance, under the Brown Act, the city has the opportunity to do something called cure and correct. If the city does that, then the person cannot challenge in court the original Brown Act description that they felt was invalid. So, in order to save the city time and effort of defending a lawsuit and possibly not succeeding, and possibly having to pay attorney's fees, we had recommended that we just re-agend, we sent a letter saying that we would cure and correct by re-agendizing the appeal fees and presenting a new ordinance, and that's what's here before you today.
Now, colleagues, there is an amendment that is floating around, and I did second it, because it speaks to how we can further improve these adjustments to deal with the nonprofits and those groups who may not have the wherewithal to pay for these fees. I'm happy to send that back to Planning Committee. I would hope that perhaps Budget and Finance would want to look at it too, because it is speaking to fees. Now, colleagues, I'm not an alarmist, but the fact is, this time next year, we could go from 400 positions in the Planning Department, semi-down to 230-something. That's possible. That's almost half the Planning Department could be, will not be there for us to serve our communities and to serve the city. Now, that means we have to be that much more strict and, how can I say this, aware of what opportunities may lie to generate the kind of resources that allows us to serve our constituents. Now, that's what I believe we're trying to achieve here. I understand that we were probably one of the cities with the lowest fees when it comes to this type of work. I am trying to get us into a place where we understand the opportunity cost for our actions, but we did everything possible to get as much input as we could in this process, given all the different stages we've been through. I encourage a no vote. I did second the amending motion. Nothing's perfect. I'll be gladly bring that back to my committee. I encourage that we move forward with this action so that the fees can be in place while we study how we can improve this in any other way possible. So again, I encourage a no vote, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Corretz.
Thank you. First, I wanted to ask staff, what happens, just to clarify again, if we don't pass the motion today or this week?
Again, for the record, Sharon Cudov-Cargnes. It, in our view, it brings into question the ability of the city to implement that originally adopted ordinance because it has been challenged under the Brown Act. And therefore, we need to adopt this ordinance in order to have appeal fees.
Okay. And so, for that reason, I'll support the ordinance today, although I have the amending motion that I've submitted that Councilmember Reyes referred to and seconded. And I thank him for his leadership and all his work on this issue for many months. Another question for staff, and please hold my time. What happened between September 2nd and today? Why were the fees reduced to the current level that's being proposed in the ordinance today?
You mean the lower fees from the $6,100? What happened was, after the ordinance was adopted, we continued to hear from the communities that $6,188, even though it was lower than the original $7,000-plus, it was still very high. We, like I indicated earlier, our original approach is for cost recovery, because we do not want the land use or processing becomes a burden of the general fund. But looking at the cost, and we continue to think that until the Planning Department has the opportunity to re, to further analyze our processes and find areas where we can streamline, we want to have the fee decreased down to a level that would be reasonable to both the city and also not too prohibitive to the community. We have looked at the processes, but it involves, to change the building and safety appeals to the Planning Department, it requires code changes, and that is a lengthy process. So we will continue to look at that, but, so we kind of came up, you know, we recommend, what we're recommending today, to kind of make it possible for both sides to not, to, you know, to, I'm sorry, to either, to have something that's like the either extreme.
So we recognize, colleagues, that if we approached everything by full-cost recovery, we'd run a $7 or $8 billion surplus every year because we'd be charging everyone for everything. We're obviously recognizing that civic participation comes at a price too, and we're willing to help subsidize that. I think even at this lower level that's being proposed today, these fees would have a somewhat chilling effect on civic participation. And so, the motion I proposed says, go ahead with the ordinance because we need to have something, and it does reduce the fees substantially. But again, let's send it back to the Planning Department, send it back for some real input by the neighborhood councils and homeowners associations and other residents in the city, and let's bring it back with a substantially lower rate. So I asked my colleagues to vote both for the ordinance and for the amending motion to review the fees and substantially reduce them for neighborhood appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you, and I appreciate your amendment, Mr. Corretz, and I know that Mr. Reyes has supported that, because I agree, and I, and I know we're in a tough time, and I think a lot of our debate was taking place in July and August, when we were hearing the dire, dire reports of what was happening to not only Los Angeles, but for cities up and down the state. And we began to look at things we hadn't looked at before, like charging people for services that we provided. But I will tell you, Dennis, when you and I were on the Charter Reform Commission in 1997, what we heard over and over and over again was from people in neighborhoods who felt particularly run over by the planning process and by developments that were coming into their neighborhoods. And many times, they weren't even aware that things were happening, they told us until they heard the bulldozer rev up early in the morning and some property was being graded, and then they tried to get involved, which again, was problematic for everybody. So a lot of what we did in the Charter Reform effort was So a lot of what we did, uh, in the Charter Reform, uh, effort was, uh, area planning commissions, the creation of neighborhood councils, a, a way to really begin to bridge the gap between the decisions that we make down here and the impact it has on people's neighborhoods. And I do think this higher fee for the appeals, um, will, as Mr. Corretts said, have a chilling effect on average people who have a stake in their neighborhood and have feel like, have felt like there was a wrong decision made. On, on the reverse, a developer would have no trouble, uh, coming up with that kind of a fee if the decision went against them. So we've got to figure out, and I think maybe by sending it back and kind of re-looking at this appeal fee, uh, let's try to find something, um, and maybe we even look at, uh, helping, uh, again subsidize if it comes through the neighborhood council or, or some way to give, I know everybody's afraid that there are certain people that just appeal everything, which, again, that's their right, but maybe we try to, uh, streamline these appeals through the, the neighborhood council that has a jurisdiction over that particular area, maybe we look at it, uh, in, in that respect. But anyway, I, I do feel like we would be taking a step backwards if we were to, uh, institute this higher fee on people in their neighborhoods who are trying to, uh, again, keep control of what goes on, uh, in their neighborhood. So I would support this amendment, uh, and, and take another look at this. We, we have now got more engaged people in the city than we ever had, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing. And I say, the more people that get involved in a particular land use issue, ultimately, the better the project finally is if and when it's built.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Mr. Corretts and I were just talking. We put this motion together rather quickly, he and I, today, and we put it together, frankly, uh, because the community was, uh, in an uproar. And, and when you heard Louise Frankel and Ellen Schwartz and others speak, they spoke because their understanding of what was put before them would mean that community groups would have to pay more, uh, to appeal things. And that's one of the basic notions of community groups, is the opportunity to look at character and scale of community. And in my district, I have about nine different areas, and each one of them has a focused community group that takes deep interest in things. Uh, we put in here that, um, according, I support, uh, item 23. That's basically because you got to have some fee structure in place, okay? Um, and that, uh, we would further reduce, um, and waive or return to existing appeal fee schedules for community-based certified nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(4)'s, 501(c)(6)'s. And I just want to make sure in that we could include homeowner groups and other neighborhood groups, um, that have created themselves, that are not necessarily affiliated with a neighborhood council, but are community-based groups that care. So I'm hoping that when we come back in 30 days, um, that the planning department will consult with the neighborhood councils, okay, um, the homeowner groups and others prior to bringing back its recommendations. And in respect to Mr. Reyes, he worked this process for many months, and then the Budget Committee got involved in it. It was all based on full cost recovery. We can't do anything around here anymore without somebody paying for it. We just don't have the money. And that was the intent of it, nothing to do with giving developers, uh, an edge over community groups. And, and so that was the part that shook a lot of people up and, and got them concerned. So I look forward to when you report back on this and how we actually deal with this motion that we put forward. And again, Mr. Corretts, I'm so happy you're on the council. The leadership he has provided has been incredible on a lot of community-based groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Alarcon.
I need, I need a little bit of clarification. Uh, first of all, uh, I, I oppose, uh, the, the fee increase, particularly this one for building and safety, which increases by almost 2,000 percent. Uh, and I don't think we've adequately, uh, had, uh, addressed this in public hearings. I understand this matter was waived out of committee, and so, uh, the public has not had, I think, a thorough opportunity to discuss the cure. Uh, and, uh, and I have serious reservations about whether even the cure is, is, uh, defensible to, uh, toward a, a victorious action on, on our part. So I oppose, uh, this ordinance, and I'm not going to vote for it in any way, shape or form, uh, because to do so would be to put, put, uh, my statement forward that I somehow think we're doing it legally when in fact I think we're not. And so, um, but I have, I have a, why, why can't we just, I remember this, when I was a, I think a teenager, this movie was Little Abner, this really bad movie was, uh, came out, but I can't forget this song. It says, "Put 'em back the way they was." And, um, oh, why can't we just put the fees back the way they were and then come back with a report, uh, to, uh, to figure out what is an appropriate adjustment? Hold my time, please.
Counselmember, the 360, uh, the, um, original fee was for the building and safety appeal to a planning department was set by building and safety many, many years ago, and there was no consideration of how the resources the city has to put into to process these appeals. And the comprehensive, comprehensive fee study allowed us to really examine the resource requirements. And a, a part of the comprehensive study also looked at how much the city has been subsidizing entitlement processing. And our old fee structure translates to 60 percent subsidy from the general fund. In the old, in the days when the economy was good and the city revenue was adequate, there was really not much concern. But today, um, one, the general fund does not have any money, and two, the planning department, like Councilman, um, Reyes had indicated, we have a work program for over 400 people, and we only have, with the furlough, we will, we're down to around 250.
Without due respect, maybe the city attorney could answer that question? Because you're not, you're not answering my question.
Okay.
My question is a question of process, not substance.
Right. I understand that, Councilman. Again, for the record, Sharon Siedov-Kardness. Um, because you've already adopted an ordinance that changed the numbers, in order to go back to what the numbers used to be, you have to adopt another ordinance. So that's what it would take to return to the old fee schedule.
Um, if we received and filed this motion and called for drafting, or, or called for a new study, would it have the effect to, uh, to stop this ordinance from going into effect? Please hold my time.
At the current time, the council had adopted a new fee schedule for appeals, and that, um...
But can we just rescind it?
Again, that would take an ordinance.
Can we just amend the current ordinance before us?
You could, yes, you could do an oral amendment, and then we would have to bring you back, um, next week, the, um, the new language.
Members, uh, I, I think this is a very trepidatious path that we are walking down, and I, I, on, on policy, I disagree with the extent of the fee increase, and I do agree with the city attorney and thank the city attorney for catching, uh, the, the, what I consider to be a violation of the spirit of the Brown Act, if not indeed a violation of the Brown Act. We cannot develop a trust by our public if we continue to sneak things by. This matter, while it was agendized, was agendized, I think, in a way that I didn't even know. So how do we expect the public to know about the fee increases as a primary, uh, consideration of this matter? Um, so I would move that, that we, that we seek to amend the ordinance to reflect a more constructive and appropriate, uh, fee schedule, rather than approve something that we all know is inappropriate. Uh, and, um, and, and, and I cannot vote for, uh, for, for, with all due respect, because I, I agree with the spirit of, of your intent, uh, in, in submitting the, the motion, I cannot vote for it if it has anything to do with increasing the fees because there is no guarantee that we will come back to reduce them. Um, and so I would ask that we amend this ordinance as soon as possible, immediately if possible, and, 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 and come back with the, with the, uh, information next week, uh, as recommended by the city attorney. But I, I also think we, we have to have a committee hearing on this. This is not something that we can waive to council. This is a big deal, and, and we've got to have a hearing on this. Two hearings if necessary, three, whatever. But the point is that you, that by, by coming directly to council, we sent another message that we're trying to put something on. When the city attorney said that we didn't, we didn't conduct ourselves, uh, to, to put ourselves in the strongest position to defend in court from a Brown Act perspective, and then we waive it out of committee, you think that strengthens our position? I don't think so. It's a big mistake. Let's, let's cure it by rescinding it. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Zine, is it Mr. Zine's seconds?
No.
All right. Next speaker will be, uh, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just ask the person, uh, the planning department, when did Ms. Goldberg come in, in place in your department? When did she get hired? Well, how long has she been in place?
Ms. Goldberg came to the planning department early 2006.
So at that time, uh, through budget hearings and such, we made a commitment to the planning department about looking at the fees which the city funded?
Yes.
Okay, and how long did that study go on?
Um, the planning department received funding December 2008.
Okay.
And we, we did this, um, study for three to four months.
And the study was funded by the city by the independent group that evaluated our fees?
Yes. The study was conducted by Matrix, um, of San Francisco.
And how much did we pay for that?
Um, the study is a little bit over $100,000.
How much?
A, a little bit over 100, 100,000.
And before we started the study, how much was the city subsidizing planning fees?
About 60 percent.
So about 60 percent of all of the planning fees were being paid by the general fund, not by the people that were putting forth the project?
Correct.
Is that also how we dealt with appeals in the sense of subsidizing?
Appeals actually is higher. The 60 percent is, is on average. Appealed was $74, so it was a, a law more six, more than 60 percent.
Okay, so the city was subsidizing more than 60 percent on appeal fees?
Yes.
Okay. And so the study came forward, and we came up with a matrix as to the new fees?
Yes.
Okay. And at the time, if I remember correctly, the department came forward and said they were concerned about some of the fees being higher, so they made a policy decision to reduce them down well below full cost recovery?
Um, yes, we, for some fees that we realized was a little bit over the, uh, full cost, so we recommended a council adopted to lower them to full cost recovery. And for single-family homeowners, we recommended 50 percent subsidy from the city, and that was also adopted.
Okay. So the, the issue is you've managed the fees, even with the study, you've managed them below what the study recommended?
Yes, in some.
And with that, what was the expectation for this year's budget if we approved these fees on July 1st? What would we expect, or you were expecting as a department to receive in, with these fees?
We expect to receive about nine months of, um, the revenue.
About nine months? What would that be in dollars?
Um, excuse me?
About 6 million?
Five to 6 million.
Okay. And so we've missed that nine-month cutoff?
Uh, just a little bit, by a little bit, because of the 60-day.
So every day that we retreat from this report where the 6 million that is helping the fun your department is going to dissipate?
Yes.
Okay. And so then we would be back to the point of subsidizing legitimate fees back, getting closer to the 50 to 60 percent again?
Yes, every day's delayed is going to, going to require some company.
And without the increased fees, what impact would it make on your budget as to the mandates we've given you for community plans and all of the things that we've asked the department to assume?
Well, there's only limited funding in the general fund, and for the community, for the community plans, it's 100 percent general fund-supported. So there will be, we will have to compete for the same resources.
So the general fund plan that we've asked you to update 10 per year? 10 or 12 per year?
Yes, we, we're supposed to add four each year, but because of the funding and staffing restrictions, we're not able to do that.
So without this increase, what would be the potential of doing those 10 community plans or additional four per year?
Well, like, like we indicated, there, any impact to the five to 6 million will add to the burden on the general fund. So let's say if we, um, decrease revenue by 1 million, that would be the 1 million that could be used on either the planning department, long-range planning, or other things in the city.
Okay, when you're talking about reducing from the general fund on your department, are you really talking about personnel loss that you couldn't hire people?
Well, the personnel loss actually is a funding issue, but also a management hiring issue, so...
I mean, but just the issue of your budget. If you lost, if you did not get the 60 percent contemplated from these increases, what would be the impact on your budget?
Well, because we're, it's, we are mandated, it's mandatory that we process these cases, we have to do them. So the impact would be that we, if we don't have additional resources funded by its own fees, we will have to re-appropriate our existing staff, and that the only area that we can pull staff from would be long-range planning. That would be the new community plans.
And so I think Mr. Reyes mentioned earlier what the potential of loss of personnel over time, and where, where are you now, and what would be the potential loss of personnel if we do not pass these fees?
We currently have around 290, uh, 290 employees currently, but 80 percent of our staff is on furlough, so that takes away, uh, about 24 to 25 FTE. And with the E-RIP, we are taking the risk of losing maybe 30 to 40, uh, senior staff. Uh, as senior, I mean, people with a lot of knowledge and seniority. So we're looking at about 230 people.
Okay. Uh, colleagues, let me just say, I think that we have studied this for three or four years, Mr. Reyes has had a ton of hearings. I don't think you can afford to go back to where we were, funding 60 percent of these fees. Also, every council office has a subsidy fund. If they choose to subsidize up to 50 percent of developmental fees, you can go and help nonprofits as opposed to having, if they're built, if they're part of the building community. So there are a variety of things that have been put in place to assist, but in my judgment, if we do not pass this and we lose access to the 6 million dollars, the many things that we're asking planning to do will go by the wayside. The other issue is, is that we can't keep giving money away or not collecting it and then keep putting services back on the departments and expect them to provide those services. And so it's the only way that planning is going to recover. The reason we've gone through this methodical process of asking them to get the fee study by an independent person was it was not their study, it's independent. The reason we approved the fees and asked them to buy policy to back off on some because getting full cost recovery would have been too expensive. And so these are things that were done, they're in place, they're going to continue to massage it. I think the last thing planning told us when we approved the, uh, the fees before is they will continue to adjust them, evaluate them, and get more information. That process is going on. In my judgment, we have to move forward, approve these just for the health and welfare of this department and to provide the service to the development of community that basically came in, and many of them supported these fees.
Mr. Oban.
How you doing? Have you ever read something and not read it all? Have you ever read something and not read it all?
Yes.
Well, I'll ask the city attorney. I feel a little bad. I know this is a lot of work, and Mr. Reyes did a lot of work, but there's one little chapter that affects a variety of people who've come down to voice concerns, because I did question the raises back in August. I did question, because Ms. Goldberg was here, is that correct, when she presented it? I did question some of the costs there. But there almost should be italics in our ordinance is when it reflects the, uh, the community and the ability of the community to engage, because I think it should be very well-spelled out. Uh, I can understand the pressure, as Mr. Reyes spoke earlier, on your department and not being able to serve at all. I could, and I can understand what Mr. Alarcon is saying, but also at the same time, I understand there's a need. Mr. Reyes, can I just ask Mr. Reyes a question, his chair? You would like to see this go forward with the exception of this part that we have a question on today?
I believe we can't afford not to go forward.
Got it. Okay. But on that issue, is there any way we could amend the ordinance? But on that issue, is there any way we could amend the ordinance here on the floor to try to solve everybody's problem today?
For the record, Chair and City of Cardinals, yes, councilman, you can propose an amending motion, and then we will bring the language back. Since the language is not before you today, the ordinance will come back to you amended on first reading next week.
Okay, what is the fee charged now, today, if you walked up to the planning to amend it?
Councilman, do you mean the building and safety appeal to the planning department?
Yeah, the appeals, the appeal fees.
Yes, currently it's three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars.
And that's what anyone pays when they appeal it?
As, as of today, yeah.
So what would be the problem, I'm just asking, because that would solve a concern that people have voiced, if we just handle that. And I'm looking for help around here, because I'm just trying, because this will, this will be in January before it gets back to us, if all the time's right. Does anyone have any feeling to help on this here?
What is it that you're looking for?
I'm looking to try to equalize what the community said. The community said that they don't like to see that this rate go up, right? Okay, is that correct? So if we keep it the same, okay, I don't know what the, uh, what's, what's proposal on that?
Well, if we're looking at, the original fee for folks that get impacted within the first five hundred feet, goes from seventy-four dollars to a hundred-and-fifty dollars. It's the building and safety cost that seems to be in everyone's mind, what I've heard from different council members, and that fee is the Department of Building and Safety fee. It's an appeal by applicant aggrieved person from a determination made by the Department of Building and Safety. That went from three-hundred-and-sixty-eight to six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight. That figure comes from-
That went from what to what?
Three-hundred-and-sixty-eight to six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight. That's a building and safety agreement. That figure comes from an extensive study after many, many discussions and public hearings, based on the cost that the Building and Safety Department came up with, that it takes for them to address that case. And so they wanted to make sure that they were in a position to respond, to have the staff, and to get the staff to do the work, that's the fee that they came up with.
Well, you know, I'm just-
And if I'm finished, Mr. Laban.
Okay.
So we're at a point where we, as a council, need to decide what part of our budget are we going to use to pay for this service, as opposed to getting this fee for that particular function. But there's a matrix here that breaks it down, we can get it to you. Uh, this, I was hoping the staff of respective districts would have done their work to inform the decision-makers as to how we got here. We literally did a comprehensive study, we did a series of meetings, and, uh, I'll just stop there, because there's been a lot of work done to this.
The planning department, did you do something?
All right, Mr. Laban, we're, I'm running your time again then, okay?
Excuse me, Madam President?
Yeah, I stopped your time for a second, now you're back on the clock.
Thank you very much. Uh, did you work with community at all as, uh, Assistant General Manager of Planning Department?
Yes, I do.
And what, no, did you work with community on this?
Oh, did I?
Did you say to them that it's going up this big, this price?
Every report that was submitted to council and the draft report have been sent to the neighborhood councils.
I understand that, but here's the problem I have, members, that if you remember in August, I challenged the Director of Planning of some of these giant leaps, these giant leaps, and then she explained everything, but never was it pointed out, like I said, did you read everything and didn't really read it, that this affects the community's ability to engage in government? And that's something that I think is basic for all of us here. So, uh, if it can't be solved today, I think we should break that one issue out, if it's, uh, if it's both the work of the Chair of the Finance Committee and planning, that the general and the other work would go forward, the issues on appeal would be broken out. And, uh, Madam City Attorney, is everything okay? Are you, okay, so I just wanted to, so you get some relation, yes, Mr. Reyes, hold my time.
Point of clarification, the three-hundred-and-sixty-eight, it was recommended to six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight, but the current recommendations brings it down to a thousand. So, in other words, so this is the Building and Safety Department going through an agreement, that's the appeal for that agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So originally it was three-hundred-and-sixty-eight, Building and Safety came down to six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight. This action today breaks it down from six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight to a thousand, and they gave us a series of breakdowns, so it wouldn't be so high. And that's what today's action does.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that document, so to study it, and, uh, on that issue. But members, I just think anything that goes from, uh, three-hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, or six thousand and down, that's why I questioned it, because, uh, it is, I just don't, it makes it the ability of people to be able to voice their concern to government. And, as some others mentioned, whether it's at a neighborhood council boundary that you have that ability, like someone from Silver Lake could go to Van Nuys to appeal something, it would have to be someone in an area. Anyway, I conclude my remarks, I wasn't able to get it solved at the moment, uh, so we'll continue this discussion.
Mr. Zine and then Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine, for the first time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I was going to call the question, but obviously there's many questions remain. Regarding Mr. Alacan's motion that I seconded, if that takes effect, will all fees then stop? Or will fees still be collected? And hold my time, please, Madam President. If Mr. Alacan's motion passes, will that then suspend all fees?
Uh, again, for the record, Chair and City of Cardinals, no, it would not. First of all, the, there was a comprehensive ordinance passed, so the only thing we're dealing with at this point is some typographical errors, and then the substance is the subsection B of Section 1901, which is the appeal fees. The way I understood Mr. Alacan's motion was that he wanted to amend the ordinance that was currently before the council to basically restore the appeal fees that were in effect prior to the council's action of August the 12th. So we would have to come back to you next week with an amended motion that would then do that, I mean amended ordinance, that would do that, and then you could vote on that.
And the other option is to pursue this with a future modification of the fees.
That's correct.
And looking at the fee structure, and I heard, uh, raising the fees, furloughs within the department, all that, which really is not the public's responsibility or problem. The fact is, if there's furloughs, that's not the public's responsibility or problem. The fact is, they don't have enough folks working in that department, that's not the public's responsibility, that's ours in the city leadership. Uh, hard economic times, I don't see a lot of building taking place in City of Los Angeles at this time. I think building permits are down, just because people can't get financing to do it. But when I look at some of these fees, a fee equal to eighty-five percent of the underlying application, or thirteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, uh, fees of thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-two, thirteen-thousand-seven-twenty-four, depends on who's filing that appeal. Do these fees then cover the costs of the planning department that doesn't have the personnel, or Building and Safety doesn't have the personnel to process it, yet we're collecting the fees, and we don't have people to do the job? Hold the time, please.
Well, all these fees are in the planning department, not in Building and Safety. And also, for the thirteen-thousand-dollar fee that, Councilman, you were mentioning, that is for appeals on the planning decision, not a Building and Safety decision.
Okay, so-
It's a little different.
But then the planning department doesn't have enough people to do the job anyway, so people are paying fees, there's no one to do the job, so what are we doing besides collecting money?
We'll, we'll continue to work with the City's office if we have fees that can sustain our operation. We continue to work with them to ask for managed hiring exemption, because the, the key, you know, the managed hiring is the, is how much, how much we have to pay for the service, services that we provide. So if we can recoup, if not a hundred percent, but a good portion of the, the services we provide, then we will have more, we'll have better ability to pay for the resources that we were trying to get. And I think another point we want to consider is, if we have to compete for general funds, we won't have enough resources to ever get enough, uh, staffing to process the cases that we have. Right now, people are waiting a long time, not just the applicant, but also the community, for a decision be made by the planning department.
But that's not because of fees, that's because they don't have the people to do the job.
Well-
Because they're on furloughs, because they don't have a contract. Let's be honest with the public. We're going to charge fees, we don't have people to do the job, yet we're going to charge more fees. It makes no sense.
Councilman, you're correct.
I know I'm correct.
But the reason, the reason we're on-
Mr. Reyes, you're asking me to hold my time, the planning department doesn't have enough people.
Yeah. Um, I feel that the reason where we are doing furlough is because the city general fund is very, very limited.
No, no, the reason we're doing furloughs is because a certain union doesn't have a contract, that's why we're doing furloughs.
Okay.
Okay, if they had a contract, we wouldn't be doing furloughs, they don't have a contract, we're doing furloughs. Yeah, the city's four-hundred-million dollars in the hole, yet people are paying fees and not getting the service for their fees. And I said I'm playing with Mr. Reyes, who's very concerned about planning, and I constantly hear, and Mr. Reyes is a great champion for planning department, they need more people. Ms. Goldberg says they need more people. They don't have the people, yet we're going to collect fees, and we don't have people to do the job. That's the problem I have with this. And thirteen-thousand dollars is a whole lot of money. And if a neighborhood council wants to make an appeal, or a homeowner's organization wants to make an appeal, we're going to charge them extreme amounts of money, which is going to deter them from trying to appeal, whether it's the NIMBYs or someone who has a legitimate grievance on an issue.
The thirteen-thousand cap is on the applicant only, not to the neighbor coun, uh, neighbor councils can, can appeal, but it's not to community groups, it's not to homeowners.
Homeowner, what's a, what's a homeowner group charge? What's their cost to make an appeal, homeowner group?
If the homeowner is the applicant, the homeowner pays eighty-five percent, but no more than thirteen-thousand.
Okay, so how's a homeowner group going to cover thirteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars?
The homeowner group, for example, a commu, a homeowner association does not pay the eighty-five percent. They, for the planning decision, they pay one-fifty if they're within the notice area.
What if they're outside the notice area, but still representative of the community?
Five-hundred.
Five-hundred dollars?
Yes, the old, the eighty-five percent is only to the applicant of the planning action, and nobody else.
Okay, the developer?
The, the developer.
Okay, so he's going to pay thirteen-thousand, she's going to pay thirteen-thousand dollars?
Eighty-five percent, what, thirteen?
If I'm a NIMBY and I want to protest this project, and I live out, I live a thousand feet away, how much is it going to cost me to file an appeal?
Five-hundred.
Five-hundred dollars?
Yes.
And I'm a homeowner who lives in the area, I don't believe in this project, so I'm going to have to come up with five-hundred dollars to pay for an appeal?
If you're beyond the five-hundred threat or the legal notice distance.
And does democracy fall in between someplace?
I'm sorry?
Does democracy fall in the, in the manner someplace where a person can come and protest something without having to pay five-hundred dollars, which is a lot of money in this day and age?
Um, it's not a protest, it's an appeal that has to be processed by the commissions.
See, I think somehow we're out of touch with reality, I really do. I think we're out of touch with reality of what we need to do to plan, what we need to do to give the neighborhoods the ability, as Ms. Hahn stated earlier, we were charter commissioned, we wanted to empower people, and I think the more we charge, the less we empower people, and the more we dissuade people from getting involved, and they throw their hands up in frustration, say the developers run the city, and nobody else cares. That's a concern I have.
Mr. Reyes? Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, colleagues. Uh, what's startling to me is that we all voted for this already. We had this discussion, we voted for this. This was to correct typos, and then we came in for adjustments to reduce fees. So whoever let out all this information out in the, uh, email world fed a lot of misinformation that got people excited and misinformed. We all voted for this already. This was to correct typos and lower fees. The folks, when you talk about democracy, and do we have planners, and are we going to pay for them or not? The fact is, we have the personnel right now. If we don't have these fees, we're going to be losing them. Then we won't have them. So that addresses, Congressman Zine's, uh, questions, and quite frankly, colleagues, I know it sounds good to say we're going to defend the people, we can defend democracy, believe me, that's what I've been trying to do for the past nine months. I was hoping the staff of each one of you would have been informed as to what this study means, that you can make informed decisions, that you can be comfortable with the vote. And what boggles the mind, at least for me, is we already voted for this. This was to deal with the typos, to address the Brown Act that was raised, that we responded to, and we lowered the fees. So for the council members who feel that haven't been, have not been informed, then why did you vote for it the first time? You actually already voted for this. So I know it sounds good to project a certain image of how dare we crucify the local neighborhood because we're increasing their fees and lowering the developer's fees? That's not true. That's not true at all. So there's a lot of responsibility going on as to how we're misinforming the public, and it's a shame. All I'm asking you, colleagues, is to think about your district, think about all the planning work you'd like to get done, and yes, the economy is down, you don't see a lot of development right now, but now is the time to take care of your district, to figure out how to improve the quality of life, and for that, we need the planning function and its discipline. And all I'm asking is for you to respect the work of the planners, the city attorney's office, my office, and what we set forth since you've already voted for this. So this is really about lowering the fees that have been already addressed, making the corrections from the Brown Act, and for the typos, but this has been vetted in the public eye, we have been transparent, and contrary to some comments that we're sneaking this through, because we waived a committee, out of committee, we actually had this in a dual committee with buildings, with, uh, budget and finance and planning, I had it in my committee. It was supposed to come back to my committee, I waived it because I felt we were comfortable enough to have this discussion in the open, in a transparent light, so we want to hear what we're saying. So again, I encourage, and I vote, and, uh, just vote the way you did before, because you already approved this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and I may come back to you when it's time to vote and ask you to lay out, uh, what is before us, uh, and I'll ask the city attorney to do that also. Mr. Wesson, for the first time.
Hi, Herbie. Thank you, uh, Madam President, and, and members. Nobody on this council tries to protect the people more than Mr. Reyes, and that everybody should submit to. He handles very, very difficult issues. He makes our lives easier, and I thank you for that, and I served with you on various committees, so I know the work that you put in. There are going to be projects, things that you're going to want and things that you're not going to want in your district, and if we continue to handcuff the planning department, those decisions are going to take longer and longer. So we do need to come to some middle ground. Like Mr. Reyes says, the reason why we're here today is basically, basically to clean up some technical errors. We had discussions on this, and we voted for it before. Had we been fortunate enough for somebody to catch those errors early on, we would not be having this debate. So I respect every chair, every individual here, whatever committee you chair, I'm going to attempt to give you the benefit of the doubt, because you're spending more time on that issue, and I'm dependent on you to give me a recommendation that I can live with. That's what I try to do. But with that said, Madam President, if I could get, because I want to support Mr. Reyes, but I want to get some clarification as to what Mr. Carras and Mr. Rosendahl, because it's my understanding that you guys have, uh, either put in a motion or an amendment that might make this easier for the community to, to, uh, live with. So if, it would be appropriate if, if I could have one of them, or the city attorney, or someone, uh, indicate to me what we're, what you're attempting to do. On the surface, it does appear that you are truly attempting to try to not only make sure that the, the planning department can continue and do the things that they need to do, but you're also trying to be fair with the community, to create a system that, uh, that gives them, at a reasonable cost, they can complain, because each and every one of us support the people having a right to appeal, to protest, or whatever word you want to use. So if I could get some clarification, that hopefully would help more than myself, it might help some other colleagues.
Mr. Alacan is next for the second time.
Members, the, uh, I think, I think the difference in terminology is the difference between a cure and a technical change. Uh, curing the, a Brown Act violation, a potential Brown Act violation, is not curing-
Curing the, a Brown Act violation, a potential Brown Act violation, is not curing a technical change. It's a significant argument that, that, that underlying it is, is the notion that you've tainted the process, therefore, any of the considerations are, are not, are, have not been heard appropriately. So, the, the concern that I have is the increase of the appeal fees. And also, I have a concern because we capped the developer fees. In other words, in total, we reduced the fees on the developer, but we increased the fees on the appellant's to developers' projects. That is an inconsistency that, that, that I do not support. When I said, "Put it back the way it was," I recognize that we, we made developer fees 85% of the underlying application across the board. It doesn't cap at 13,000, it may be 15,000, maybe 20,000. That's, that's how I'm reading this, and my staff interpreted it to me that way, so if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but, but the point is this. We don't, you know, I was under the impression that if we didn't vote on this today, that the ordinance would take effect, but I am now under the impression that we have till October 26th. Is that incorrect? Madam City Attorney?
Right.
Hold my time, please? Yeah, we have till the 26th.
Till the 26th.
I believe we can cure this in terms of a council remedy in, in that timeframe, and therefore, I withhold my vote.
Ms. Hahn, for the second time?
Ordinance.
Thank you, um, thank you. And, and Mr. Wesson, I am, I am glad that you, you know, pointed that out about our colleague Ed Reyes. You are absolutely right, and the line that got me was, because of the hard work Ed does in his committee, really makes what we do a lot easier, and there certainly are projects coming down the pike that are gonna be important for, for all of us. What I'm wondering, again, there's, there's, just seems to be, this is a moving target still, we were told by Friday it would take effect if we, if we didn't vote on it today, so I mean, there's just some moving pieces of this. Is it possible to take Section 3 and suspend it for 30 days, and the rest of the ordinance takes effect, all the fees that are being collected by developers and everybody, except for this appeal section? Is that something legally we could do today? Hold my time.
It is our view that, based on the challenge to the adoption of the ordinance on August 12th pursuant to the Brown Act, that it puts into question our ability to implement the appeals fee portion of that.
Doesn't that make sense? Can we suspend Section 3, which is this appeals piece, move the ordinance forward for 30 days, and then we take another look at this one section, and maybe get back with neighborhood councils, maybe come to have everybody come to the table, and maybe talk? One of the things I would like to know in this time, maybe we suspended this, was what amount of money are we talking about for the appeals? What would planning like to see in, in some account that would cover appeals by homeowners in the 500 feet, outside the 500, for, for a year? What are we talking about?
Well, could I clarify my answer?
Okay, hold on tight.
Yes, you could suspend it.
Oh, okay.
And the effect would be that there would be no fee, appeal fees-
Right.
-that could be collected-
Right.
...until you adopted another ordinance.
Right, okay.
From anyone, including developers.
Well, just the, just if it's an appeal.
Right, the appeal fees.
But all the other fees-
Right, all the other fees go into effect on October the 26th, but it's everybody's appeal fees that would be stayed during this period of time.
Right, and that's something, you know, I think would be a fair way, maybe, to take another look at this section, but again, I wanna, I wanna get this pot of money that we're talking about, that planning needs to process appeals, because appeals are a good thing for, for lots of reasons. And then, let's maybe go back to our collective thinking colleagues, maybe the neighborhood councils would like to step up to the plate and help contribute to this appeal fee. Maybe all of us could look at our, some, some of the, the money we have, and maybe we come up with an appeal fund for a year that would cover what we think would be reasonable, and then, then make it absolutely, you know, doable for people to, to engage in this process. That, that's just one of the things I'd like to look at. So, can we suspend this for two weeks, a month, and move the rest of the ordinance forward today? That's what I would like to move, colleagues. Do I get a second on that?
I'd like to second that, but maybe add another step to this that hastens the process. In supporting the amendment by Councilor Rosendahl and Councilor Caretz, if we could suspend that section-
Section.
-to be within those 30 days-
Yes.
-as part of that amendment, then it gives us time to focus just on that section, addresses the concerns by Councilor Caretz and Councilor Rosendahl, addresses what you're saying, and allows us to fold this in, and this time, we'll get all the deputies from the respective districts involved, to get to that detail that makes you uncomfortable, each, one of you uncomfortable as decision-makers. Believe me, I am just trying to make sure we don't lose momentum-
I know.
-in our work, so-
I know.
I'm fine with those 30 days-
Okay.
-if it allows us-
Okay.
-to address the concerns that have been raised-
Okay.
-by ourselves and Councilor Alarcon.
And can I get that amount that we're looking at, that planning needs annually?
We do have a comprehensive study, it's very-
Okay, because, yeah, there's a lot of-
It's very detailed.
I know.
We can get that to you.
Do you think we can get an amount, though? And then, let's all work together, neighborhood councils-
It's in the study.
-working with council members, to maybe look at how we fund this appeal fee that the city needs to recover, and without putting it on the backs of homeowners and neighborhood councils.
Eva Yar-McDonald, City Planning. Just on the ballpark, I wanna address your question, how much we're talking here. If you, first of all, if you sus, if we suspend Section 3, that will suspend all appeals, including appeals to the planning actions, and appeals to the building and safety actions. So that is all of them, not just that one part about the 6,000, or the 1,000 dollars. But if, if we just kind of focus on the building and safety appeals to the Planning Department, currently is 368 dollars, let's run it down to 350, and if we don't adopt what's in front of you today-
No, I'm asking, I'm asking for an annual, I'm asking for an annual amount.
Yeah, the difference is about, somewhere around, if all of them were filed by people within the notice area, that's a thousand dollars, the difference would be about 132,500. That's the-
So about 100,000, 132,000?
132, annually, so-
Thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
But that's the one type. If that, that's, if, I'm sorry, if that's if all the appeals are filed by people outside the distance, within the distance, it's about 30,000.
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
Okay.
Clearly, the, the spirit of this is because we wanted to recover fees for service. So we must have an idea of what we're talking about, first time, second time, goes through the whole process, you must have, so what I would like in this time period is a ballpark amount of what you think the Planning Department needs, with our best guess, our best projection on what it would cost to process an average years of appeals, the, kind of the way they've been running in the last five years in the city. That's what I'm talking about. I, I want that amount. So if you can get that back to me in these 30 days-
Okay.
-I think we can then, colleagues, maybe come together with neighborhood councils and others to see whether or not there's another way to fund this one piece of the Planning Department's budget. That's all I'm saying. Maybe not, but I need a ballpark number. Thank you.
Mr. Caretz, for the second time?
Yeah, it wasn't exactly what I was expecting to speak on when I pushed my button, but I hope we all realize we're talking about letting developers off the hook for free appeals for 30 days. I think that's crazy. So somehow, we, we, we have to be able to, to separate that out. We obviously want our, our neighborhood coun, our neighborhood associations and homeowners' associations to, to not have to pay these inflated rates.
Councilor Caretz?
I don't think we want developers off the hook for their, their 11,000 dollars in fees.
Can I respond to that? One approach would be, is that we keep the fees as is currently, for those 30 days, so that way we don't go to zero, because we're gonna have a landslide of appeals, and we'll just keep it as current structure, wait those 30 days, and then we'll come up with all the different answers to the questions that you have.
Now, by, by the current structure, you mean the original structure where an appeal was 74,000, 74 dollars?
Mr. Reyes?
And what you're talking about is, under the current structure, where a neighborhood appeal is 74 dollars?
Mr. Reyes-
As opposed to the current, proposed one where it was 6,000 something.
Mr. Caretz, the city attorney is trying to get our attention to make comment. I'll hold your time.
The only way to restore the fees to what they exist today, prior to the effective date of the ordinance on October 26th, is to put in another amendment. It needs an ordinance. Because the ordinance passed, it on October 26th wipes out the pre-existing fee schedule. That's why when I was, when Mr. Alarcon was making his motion, what I said was that he wanted to amend this ordinance, for us to bring back a different ordinance next week that would then contain the language to be the same as what it is today, before the ordinance takes effect. So-
Well, that, that was-
If you do nothing, then you will have no appeal fees until you adopt a new ordinance.
Yeah, if we, if we can restore the original fees that we were asking, that seems like a safer thing than to let developers off the hook for a month.
And you can do that.
So I, I hope we can clarify which one of those things we're, we're doing.
Right, and just for another clarification for the council, we can draft that language and bring it back to next week. However, in doing so, one of the things that the fee study determined was that, as for developer appeals, the 85% in some cases was more than the cost of providing the service, therefore, it would have, the fee would have not complied with the government code. That's why the limit of the 13,000, whatever, 13,277 was put in there, because that is the maximum cost for processing those appeals. So if you wanted us to reinstate the old language, we would have to add that cap for the fee to be legally supportable.
So that, I guess that sounds like what we're all trying to get at, at least for the time being, to, to reinstate the, the, the appeal fees for non-applicants and developers, but to, to make the change for the applicants and developers, so that we're not, we're not overcharging them-
Right.
-and violating the, the law in that way.
We could bring that language back too, if that, somebody wants to move to amend this ordinance to do that.
Well, I guess, in, in the spirit of, of Councilmember Alarcon's original proposal, I, I would, I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
The motion is to, to go back to the, the rates we were originally charging for appeals for residents, but to make the change for developers, so that we're not violating the law by charging them more than the cost of the service.
Right.
Mr. City, first of all, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, and Mr. City Attorney, is, there, there is overlap by Mr. Caretz's motion with Mr. Alarcon's motion, is that correct? With the exception of the reference to developer fees? They're, they're not the same?
And, and this, this would be by Monday, because otherwise, we run out of time, correct?
Well, you would have it next, for next Tuesday's council session.
So we'd have one day where we wouldn't have an ordinance? Okay, with, with that direction for Tuesday's council session.
Mr. Parks?
No, I'm sorry.
Mr., Mr. Reyes, you wish to speak last?
I'll speak last.
All right, Mr. Alarcon.
Members, I think we're honing in on, on getting to the issues that we're concerned with. I, I share Mr. Caretz's concerns about waiving, or suspending the fees relative to the applicant, which would be the developer. And frankly, I'm trying to understand the building and safety piece, because it was 368 bucks, and depending on which category you're in, it's, it's, it could be different. And that's the part that is, is most concerning to me, that the fact that we capped the developer fees, and, and let me get some clarification on that, because I'm, I'm informed that the developer fees are now capped at 13,277, or 11,211, depending on which level of appeal. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct, Councilman-
Please hold my time.
And the reason for that is that the result of the fee study was that, for the amount of work, that, and personnel, et cetera, for the Planning Department to process the appeal, in all cases, it did not exceed that amount.
Okay, so it's cost recovery, it's a cost recovery issue?
Right, so therefore, the 85% in some cases was actually more than the cost of providing the service.
Well, can't we just change it to full cost recovery, above that amount?
Well, that, it, it is, it's still 85% of the fee, of the application fee, however, if the 85% would go above the full cost recovery being the 13,000, then that would cap it at the 13,000.
But is it always the case that, that that is more than full cost recovery?
That's what-
In some cases, that, does the cost, the department's cost go more than that?
No, actually, Eva Yar-McDonald, City Planning? No, the 13,000 is based on the, the maximum, the highest cost.
That it will ever cost the department?
It will not cost more than 13,000.
Okay, I'm, I have no problem with that. But on the other issues, so, let me understand the Caretz's motion again, because it, it's almost identical to mine, I think, but what it does is replace the fees for non-applicants?
Currently, under the, if, if I may interrupt.
Please.
Currently, under the code, we have a fee that's set in 1226-K2 for building and safety applications. And then we have, in 1901-B, appeal fees, and I think, in all cases, the appeal fees are 85% for the applicant, and for all others, I believe it's 75 dollars. We would come back to you with that exact language to replace what is in the current Section 1 of the ordinance before, before you. So we would just take that current language, and you could reenact it.
Okay, now, what is the difference between Mr. Caretz's motion and my motion?
I have to tell you that I'm not sure what the difference is.
If there's no difference, I support both.
Maybe Mr. Caretz can explain that?
My understanding of your motion was that you also restored the developer fees back to what it was before, which would be above the legal rate.
Okay, and I would, I would rescind-
So my, mine changes the developer fees, but leaves the, the residence fees the same.
Okay, then, with that, I, I rescind my, my motion. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Reyes to close, and Mr. Reyes, if you can again summarize what your objectives were today.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a point to be clarified, to understand what supporting Councilor Caretz's amendment does. We are saying that, in the next 30 days, we're gonna revisit these fees to include the stakeholders and council offices that are feeling uncomfortable with these fees, and that our action today, legally in fact, creates a new ordinance, a different ordinance, that's why I think what we need clarity is, what do these 30 days do, and how does it work within the process? Please hold my time.
All right. For the record, Sean Seidovkard, in this again, City Attorney's Office. What will happen is that you will be amending the ordinances before you today, to go back, basically, to the original, the current, or the previous- basically to the original, the current or the previous appeal fees. As for...
Just for that section, though?
Right, just for the appeal fees. And once you adopt that, that's an ordinance, and unless you're instructing me to put a sunset clause in it, it is an ordinance and will remain in place until you amend it again. So I see the 30 days as kind of the period that the councilman wants to see reports back and to work on a solution, but not necessarily come back with another ordinance. Am I correct?
Well, the, the original proposal was...
Adopt this.
Essentially because we were told we didn't have the time to, to make the change. So it was to pass the ordinance as it was presented to us and then come back in 30 days to revise it. As it is now, we're just saying, make the change to developers, but leave the rates for the residents as they are.
Right.
And that's, that's, that's the entirety of the ordinance.
And you're studying this?
I, I think would, I wouldn't object to giving direction to spending 30 days after that and talking with neighborhood councils and, and associations on what an appropriate increase should be, but it might well be nothing. And we might not come back with any change to what I'm presenting today. It could be, it could be whatever. So you, you might come back with an ordinance, you might decide not to make any changes to this.
Well, the 30 days, I want to make that tight. So do we sunset so we are forced to come back with a number that speaks to cost recovery? Because colleagues, what we're doing right now is costing us approximately, based on the comprehensive study, about $7,000 to do the building and safety appeal process. $7,000. So we're telling the Chair of Budget and Finance that the general fund will subsidize that function and that role by that much. If we do not include the fees, we are trying to attain. And I just want to make sure we're being very clear, the consequences of our decisions. I quite frankly thought we wanted to go, to the extent possible, to recover as much as we can with our costs. But the message you're sending right now is we're going to find another way to subsidize that $7,000 cost. If that's what this body wants, and that's the will of this body, I want to make sure that that's what we're making the decision on. So the 30 days, Madam Attorney? If we support Councilman Carruthers' motion, can we come back in 30 days and make the adjustments based on whatever process we engage?
The ordinance, if you amend this ordinance, it becomes a permanent ordinance.
Right.
And it will remain in place until the council amends it again.
Okay, okay. So Councilman Rosendahl Carruthers' motion essentially just captures the directive that, can you explain exactly what we're going to vote on before we vote? Because I just want to make sure it's clear.
All right, are you ready to go through this now, Mr. Reyes? Hold on a second, Mr. Lavange has, before you go, I want the city attorney to have the last word before we vote. So Mr. Lavange has pressed his button.
Members, I support what we're trying to do, but I know today's Tuesday, and God willing, Wednesday comes. Mr. Reyes, just ask a question here because we want to get this straight. Why don't we continue it one day? You come back tomorrow. I think it's the sense of the council, I may be wrong, that they want to try to clarify. You want to have that extra time to make sure we're right. Continue it one day, clarify the one issue that affects a simple, a simple appeal by a citizens group on an issue. One day, we come back and then you'll feel more comfortable. I want to feel more comfortable. So that's my only suggestion.
I do not mind us continuing this one day.
Right.
Again, because we have another period of time to understand exactly what we're doing.
Right, I think the city attorney...
It's nine months of work, reaching its threshold here.
Yeah.
And if that's what it takes to get my colleagues comfortable, I'm fine with that too. Continue this one day and just gloss everything we've said today, and let's take a real action tomorrow.
Okay. So, hold it, one day, is there a second?
What? Mr. Rosendahl?
I'll come back with a new ordinance. This is exactly right. We had a good, healthy discussion here. It's very clear that neighborhood groups matter and that they should not in any way be penalized. So let's work on that language. The motion that Mr. Carruthers and I put in, and Mr. Reyes second, gives us a little opportunity there. Come back tomorrow with it. I think the sense of the group is very clear. We don't want to penalize community groups, and we certainly don't want to let developers get away with anything. So the balance has to be worked out. And I must say, I'm on the Budget Committee, I do care about full cost recovery as an issue that if we're not going to do it, we have to be clear why we're not doing it and what that cost will be to the city.
Mr. Alarcon, I believe you wanted to make a comment.
I just want to rescind my, my action to withhold my vote.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. So with that, Mr. City Attorney, or Ms. City Attorney?
All right. Based on this discussion today, what I understand you are going to do is you're going to continue this matter for one day till tomorrow. The City Attorney's Office will draft an ordinance that hopefully captures what you've discussed today so that we can return the appeal fees to what they are prior to the current amendment. And then you can substitute that ordinance for the ordinance that's on the file and vote on that tomorrow.
And Mr. Reyes, is that acceptable to you?
Sign, sign this for me tomorrow.
Madam President, I think I've taken this to the extent that I can so everyone can be informed, so they can make an informed decision. Takes one more day, so be it, that'd be fine.
All right, so we'll continue the matter for one day. Mr. City Attorney, can we just hold this, keep the record open on this? Hold this on the desk for a day, or do we have to vote on it?
Oh, no. We don't have to vote on the continuance.
If there's no objection, it can be continued for the one day.
All right, so we want to continue this entire matter for one day without objection. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item six was being held on the desk for an amendment, and that has now been circulated.
All right, does everybody have the amendment for item number six? If you'd like to read into the record what that amendment and the item entails.
Madam President, it has been circulated. It is amending the Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee report, extending the deadlines...
For the seven cycle Prop Q, Prop K?
Extended, yeah, extended. It's being amended to extend the Parks First submission deadline from November 10th for an additional three months to February 10th, 2010.
All right, are there, no speakers in the queue on that? Why don't you open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote. That's approved, it's amended.
11 eyes.
Next item? Yes, Mr. Weezer.
Can I ask that number 22 be sent forthwith, please? 22 forthwith? Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President.
All right, next item, please.
Item 12 was being held on the desk for 12 members, which council is now back down to 11. There were cards on this.
John Walsh is our speaker on item 12.
The Department is here waiting for, at 18, if we can get it.
All right, let Mr. Walsh speak, and then we'll, then please, Mr. Lavange, call it to my attention and, so then we can have her speak. Mr. Walsh?
One minute. I've spoken on this before at the Northbridge earthquake, not too many people realize, but one of the pipelines burst. There was huge fires that day. I am the Cassandra of Los Angeles. My psychotic ravings of yesterday are conventional wisdom of today. And my psychotic ravings of today will be conventional wisdom of yesterday. We have a network of oil passing underneath. Whether these pipelines are built to withstand the big earthquake, the big one, we don't know. Stay tuned, 40,000 hits, 40,000 visitors on HollywoodHighlands.org since September 3rd. Read all about it or go to the, to the city, and the computer in the city will tell you where the pipelines are. Are pipelines under your home? Find out.
Thank you very much. All right, no speakers in the queue on this item. Open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
11 eyes.
All right, Mr. Lavange?
And this, Madam President, the ordinance does go over one week.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lavange?
Madam President, and Mr. City Clerk, could you call 18 there for, just so that we have, Department representatives up here?
Yes, item 18 is a resolution declaring October 21st as Disability Mentoring Day in the City of Los Angeles.
Members, we have Roberta Houston Swain, our Department of Disability Executive Director, as well as Betty Wilson. And I want you to give her a big hand because we're going to honor Betty for Community Affairs Director for the Department of Disability, for all the work that she's done. Betty and I, and many of you have known her from her days working for Tom Bradley on the 21st floor here in City Hall. And over those years, she truly has been a saint to all of us in making us aware of needs. And if the department staff could sit to give us a brief overview of what our objective is tomorrow for Disability Mentoring Day.
We have Paula Perlman of Disability Rights Legal Center who will give the overview.
Hi, Paula. Just pull that mic to you and you give us a little overview.
Sure. So, Sasan? Good, well, you know, I wrote this to say good morning. Good afternoon. So, the Disability Rights Legal Center is a cross-disability organization to promote and preserve the rights of people with disabilities by providing legal and related services. Disability Mentoring Day is a national program to promote career development for students with disabilities by job shadowing. And the Disability Rights Legal Center is Los Angeles' coordinator for this national program. This year's Disability Mentoring Day is being held in honor of our longtime DRLC board member and disability advocate, Betty Wilson. Ms. Wilson has served the community for over 20 years as Director of Community Affairs and is currently the Acting ADA Director for the City of Los Angeles' Department on Disability. It's critically, and that's a separate issue on November 5th, which we believe is critically important to maintain, November 4th, to maintain the independence of the department because disability gets lost in the shuffle. And disability can happen to anybody at any time. So can I speak a little bit about Betty and her...
Yeah, I'd like to tell a little, but no, I want you to say something because you're coming right from the heart of someone who's a practitioner.
So, you know, Betty's been a tireless, really tireless advocate for disability rights. She grew up in a family where not being successful wasn't an option. She grew up with, everybody expected her to achieve regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, and disability. It's like, you're in our family, you will achieve. And Betty holds herself to those high standards and everybody she comes in contact with. She holds our organization to those high standards as a board member. And she has been honored and with, even by the United Nations, with a distinguished service award for her work at the Commission on Human Rights and really was instrumental in the passage of the Convention on the Rights of People with Disabilities, which is the first human rights treaty passed by the United Nations in the 21st century.
Well, Betty's been our ambassador here, as I stated, from now four mayor's administrations. And right there, Betty, we're very honored that you're being honored in this there and mentoring day, which made a difference. Please give us some remarks, please.
Thank you. Thank you for this recognition. I am, I'm quite pleased. I don't know what to say because I was very surprised when they told me I was being nominated for this honor. I am so concerned that our Department of Disability and people with disabilities that we estimate and underestimate that we have over 1.43 billion people in the City of Los Angeles alone that have disabilities. Now, that's quite a staggering amount. That's almost 21% of the total population. Now, you understand that that's a very significant number of people that we must keep, that we must provide services, advocacy, and equal opportunities so that we are not part of the burden of, so that we're not part of the burden of the welfare roles where we are able to pay taxes and have jobs and able to participate in the opportunities that afford the other, people of other communities. You'll forgive me for my hoarseness today, I talked a whole lot yesterday in Sacramento. I'm also a new member of the commission, State of California. I'm a new commissioner, had my first meeting yesterday, is called some disability access and services. So it means that the City of Los Angeles has to stand out as a model for all the other cities. There are 17 people on this commission, and they come from every, every area of the State of California. They're very concerned that our department remains as a department because it's a growing number of people with disabilities throughout the entire state of California. And I want all of you to be very much aware of that. I have a lot I could say, but I think our time is running out. And thank you so much again for the honor.
Betty, you've given so much time to the city, and you've always been here in council. You're always working hard to advocate for those with disabilities. And the changes that have been made have certainly been an improvement and more need to be made. So members, let's give the Department of Disability and Betty Wilson a big hand now for this day. Tomorrow Mentoring Day, we want to think about it every day. And Madam President, thank you for the extra time in making this presentation. And Ms. Swan, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Betty. You deserve it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Mr. Clerk, I don't think we need, I guess we...
Yes, Madam, a vote is required on that.
Okay, open the roll then. Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
Next item?
Item 15 was called special for cards.
All right. Dr. Williams and, is Mr. Walsh, does he have any more time for today?
He spent two minutes.
Two more minutes? All right, Mr. Walsh, you have two more minutes today. And Dr. Williams, I don't see Dr. Williams. So, Mr. Walsh, why don't you come on up?
Don't worry, I won't be here tomorrow. I have a life, you know, I'm not going to be here every single day. I leave that to others. This is again our community events. We want to say we really enjoyed the community event and the loud music yesterday at the Marijuana Festival and the puffs of marijuana going over to the apartment house and children becoming sick at the apartment house. You'll be seeing this. Remember when you laughed at me when I said I'd bring 60 minutes to LA on the subway from hell? So you didn't laugh when I got rid of the subway to Century, the subway to the Valley. In any case, thank you, special events, $1,881 for the LAPD opening. That's pretty good. Incidentally, go to HollywoodHighlands.org. Do you know there will be a liquor license and a bar? Yes, a liquor license and a bar and a nightclub in the LAPD new building. We've got the evidence. Thank you.
All right, there's no speakers in the queue on this item. Would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
Next item?
Item 17 called special for cards.
I believe Mr. Walsh has one minute left?
Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org. Considering how I've been going after the gangs in this town, I may literally have one minute left in this city. This is, we're all in favor of this reward, $75,000 for information leading to the arrest of the responsible death of Christine Lattier and injuries to Henderson. Incidentally, there was no reward when the gang shot me in a drive-by in 1990. But then in that day, they shot me with a pellet gun because it was a warning for me to get out of politics. You want to see the scar, it's still there. But in any case, all that, those gangs were swept out of Hollywood by gentrification. I'm still here, I haven't been swept out. HollywoodHighlands.org. The post on there since Friday, there'll be a new one in a few days.
Thank you very much again. Open the roll, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, there is a special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
All right, to Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested council to offer a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the suspects who struck and killed Victor Dominguez with a large concrete block on September 13th, 2009 at 2:30 AM.
Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
All right, now for the maker of the motion. Mr., would it be Mr. Wesson? Mr. Wesson? Reward motion, special one?
Yeah, just move it.
Okay. Open the roll? Close the roll? Then tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, there are twelve members again. Would you like to go back and reconsider item twelve, the ordinance?
Yes, let's do that. All right, let's back on item twelve. Open the roll on item twelve. Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, there are twelve members again. Would you like to go back and reconsider item twelve, the ordinance?
Yes, let's do that. All right, let's back on item twelve. Open the roll on item twelve. Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Madam President, that would be on the reconsideration. Now the item would be back before council.
I'm sorry. The item was reconsidered and is now before us. Now, open the roll? Close the roll? And then tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral?
Motions are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
All right, are there any excuses?
No excuses on the book today.
All right, members, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Then please rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Lucy Villa, who passed away at the age of ninety-one. She was born in Mexico, and her family moved to Michigan when she was just an infant. The second eldest of sixteen children, Lucy helped raise her siblings and also helped the family farm cucumbers. As a young adult, Lucy moved to Chicago, where she met her husband Aurelio. They were married for almost sixty years, until his passing in nineteen ninety-eight. Lucy had a great enthusiasm for life, and she wore her heart on her sleeve. She loved to sing and dance, she loved to cry at sad movies, and she loved being a mother, a grandmother, and eventually a great-grandmother. She lifted the spirits of everyone she encountered. She is the grandmother of Pilar, who is married to Hector Cepeda, the former executive director of the Boys and Girls Club of the South Bay, and a member of the ILWU. Lucy is survived by three of her siblings, Thomas, Andrew, and Nick, four children, Alfonso, Loretta, Maria, and Carmen, four grandchildren, Pilar, Angelina, Jeffrey, and Andrea, and three great-grandchildren. She will be missed very dearly by all of her family and friends.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Anybody else on this side of the room? Or the other side? Mr. Wesson? Oh, Mr. Reyes, you have a, okay, Mr. Wesson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam President and members. I was going to adjourn in honor of my good friend on Friday, but I just couldn't put the words together, and I still haven't. It's kind of like when you work on a campaign together, that you know you're supposed to lose, and you're underfunded and understaffed, and everybody does the job of ten different people, and at the end of the day, somehow you win. You form a very special bond. And I'm referring to the Yvonne Burke for Supervisor campaign, where many of us took off two days for the entire year. So I rise to say goodbye to my dear friend Chuck Bookhammer, who was Yvonne Burke's Assistant Chief Deputy. When I was there, after a couple of years, he became the chief deputy. He was one of the best human beings that I've ever had the opportunity to know. And his life, I mean, I asked you earlier, Bill, about the Purple Heart. It was awarded to him when he was a veteran in Vietnam. He also served as a Hawthorne City Council member for twelve years or better than that. He died from complications of a surgery, so I mean, he literally, and his family, when he went into the hospital, they anticipated without a doubt that he would be coming home. And that did not occur. He was married to Barbara for forty years, had four daughters, and seven grandchildren. He helped instruct me in playing golf, so that maybe is why I'm such a terrible golfer, even today. And he was a Harley Davidson enthusiast. And, yeah, Mr. Zahn, you might have liked him, even though that his wife and Supervisor Burke and all of us wished he would retire the Harley Davidson. His services are tomorrow, close to San Diego, so I will not be here tomorrow, because I could not live with myself if I was not at his services. So I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Charles Chuck Bookhammer, and that it be all members.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Okay, Ms. Hahn would like to add to that.
I'm glad you are doing this today, and I certainly wanted to second that, but I want to be all members as well. I knew Chuck for a very long time, in all of his roles, both with the supervisor and certainly as his stint as a Hawthorne City Council member. And I will tell you, he was such a gentleman. That's how I remember Chuck. No matter what was going on at the city council meeting in Hawthorne, no matter, you just never saw Chuck get flustered. He treated everyone with respect and dignity, and I considered him a friend. I, too, was absolutely stunned when I read it in the paper. And again, like you said, he went into the hospital for an operation and died from complications of that. I'm sure his family was devastated. It's always hard to lose somebody, but sometimes when you have the opportunity to at least say goodbye, it's a little bit easier. But Chuck was just a great man, served the public with distinction and integrity, and he will be missed. I think he was only sixty-one, so he really was taken from us way too early.
Thank you very much, and thank you for including all of us, Mr. Wesson. And our hearts go out to his family and friends. With that, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?